State law to hire a court reporter to transcribe what is being said at a hearing of this nature. Our court reporter this evening is Terri Hueseth, and she is seated here at the front of the room. Because Ms. Hueseth must accurately transcribe to the best of her ability what we say this evening, it is vitally important that we talk one at a time, any of us who are participating in the hearing, and that we do not talk over one another. The second point I do want to reiterate tonight is the admonition that I believe all of the observers of tonight's hearing should have received on the back of their tickets. Although this is a public meeting of the Board of Education, it is not one in which those observing the meeting are to play any other role than to observe. All members of the public observing this meeting, whether you are in the boardroom, or if we did have anybody who made their way upstairs, are expected to conduct themselves just as they would as if this were a court of law, treating this meeting and those participating in it with dignity and respect. Those observing the meeting in this building must not audibly respond to anything they hear or see, engage in any other conversations with others, or display anything that is intended to influence the board or provoke a reaction from anyone else in the room. Any person who violates these expectations or otherwise disrupts the meeting will be asked to leave. For right now, I'd like our record to reflect those who are in the room this evening, except for those who are here to observe. Will everyone, starting with the board members, and we'll start off to my left with Board Member Campbell, but will everyone, starting with board members, please introduce yourselves and your role in this evening's hearing?
Catherine Campbell, board member.
Judy Hedrick, board member.
Megan Marshall, Vice President of the Board.
Ryan Murdock, I am the President of the Board of Education.
Kim Fritchy, board member.
Mike Allen, board member.
Roderick Sparks, board member.
Michelle Basie, Attorney for the District Administration.
While we have a moment, is there another microphone that we can get for this table? Because we need to make sure that everybody can be heard. Okay, if you guys could make sure and pass since it is, thank you, I appreciate it very much. We are, there are a couple of other things that we need to address this evening. We are here this evening to conduct a hearing on a notice of charges filed against Joe Oswald, a permanent teacher at Pleasantly Middle School. The notice of charges recommends that the board terminate Mr. Oswald's teaching contract. Mr. Oswald received the notice of charges on or about May 29th, 2021, and within 10 days, he requested a hearing before the board. That hearing is being conducted tonight, June 23rd, 2021, and is therefore within the timeframe required by Missouri Statute 168.116.3. Mr. Oswald has been charged with immoral conduct or the willful or persistent violation of or failure to obey the school laws of Missouri or the published regulations of the Board of Education. The board's role is to determine whether the charges against Mr. Oswald are true, and if so, whether the board should terminate his teaching contract. The district's administration is being represented this evening by Michelle Basie. Mr. Oswald is present and is being represented by Michael McDorman. Before we begin, I'd ask counsel for on both sides if there are any procedural objections to proceeding with the hearing this evening.
Mr. President, we would like to invoke the rule that witnesses be excluded until after they're released.
I didn't introduce myself, I'm Joe Hatley, Legal Advisor for the Board of Education. That rule will be invoked for the benefit of those watching. The witness exclusion rule is typically invoked in court proceedings so that one witness doesn't hear the testimony of other witnesses and shape their testimony according to what they heard. It's designed to make sure that everyone comes in and testifies based upon their own memory. And either side has the right to do that, and since Ms. Basie has invoked that right, that will be granted. I would ask that counsel for both parties patrol your witnesses, make sure they're not in the room before they testify, and also instruct them, since this meeting is being livestreamed, not to watch the meeting until they've given their testimony. After a witness has testified, if you anticipate any possibility that they might be recalled, they need to go ahead and leave the room. Also instruct them not to discuss their testimony with other witnesses, and if, but if you are, can be pretty sure nobody's going to have to call that person back, just let me know, and they'll be free to remain in here for the remainder of the hearing.
Thank you.
Any other procedural objections?
Yes, at this time, I do wish to address the board in that respect. As you've so indicated, Mr. President, Mr. Oswald is a tenured teacher by state law, and the purpose of the Teacher Tenure Act is to provide substantive and procedural safeguards with respect to tenured teachers. And I would cite to the board the case of Thompson versus Southwest School District, 483 Fed Sub 1170, Western District, Missouri, 1980. In that respect, statutory grounds for dismissal are to be strictly interpreted to fulfill the legislature's intent that permanent teachers have a measure of certainty and stability in employment without being subjected to arbitrary school board action, and again cite the Thompson case. There are two aspects that I want to address that I do not afford Mr. Oswald that statutory and constitutional right to due process. The first is the fact that he's being charged with uttering a racial slur. Through the course of discovery, I've asked to receive, in any respect, district policy or district definitions that in any way defines racial slur. I've not been provided that. So to charge him for uttering a racial slur when it's not contained in the policies of Lee Summit R7 School District, it's not contained in any of the documents that have been provided, it's not as an example defined in any respect in the student handbook for the middle school in which he was a teacher. So we do, the failure on this part is a significant procedural thing in not affording him his constitutional right that's guaranteed, as well as his right under the Teachers Tenure Act to be fully apprised when we have no specific definition of what words should be considered racial slur so that he may be afforded the opportunity before it happens to know that he's consciously disregarding and disobeying a policy of the district. I also am interposing a constitutional objection to the basis of terminating him because of immoral conduct. Again, immoral conduct is not defined in any respect by the policies of the Lee Summit R7 School District. The term immoral conduct is sufficient to provide the constitutionally required warning if and only if it is strictly construed to encompass only conduct which permits the inference of a conscious disregard of an established moral standards. So construed, the consciousness of wrongdoing serves as notice. Again, with no definition of racial slur, with no definition of immoral conduct, you have deprived my client of his constitutional rights to know why he is being charged. And I would cite as to that last case, Youngman versus Dearhoff, 890 Southwest Second, 330, a 1994 case. That is from the Eastern District of Missouri. For those reasons, I would ask that these proceedings be dismissed at this time as to my client.
Mr. McDorman, I think I've been deputized to make rulings on motions.
You have, and we've agreed to that, Mr. Hatley.
Your objections will be taken with the case. We've provided a schedule for post-hearing briefing for both sides, and you're certainly free to elaborate on that in your post-hearing briefing, and it will be considered by me and by the Board of Education.
I would then like my objection, this proceeding going to be a continuing objection. Mr. Hatley, is I don't have to make it with everyone's satisfactory as well?
That's perfectly fine.
Thank you.
Do you have any further objections, Mr. McDorman?
No.
For those in attendance and for fellow board members, I do want to briefly outline how we will expect to conduct tonight's hearing. First, we are going to ask the court reporter to administer an oath to the board members. That'll be done in just, in just a few moments. After that, we will hear introductory remarks from Ms. Basie, counsel for the administration. We do ask that you limit your remarks to 10 minutes or less. Then counsel for Mr. Oswald will be allowed to make an opening statement as well, and we would ask that you also limit your remarks to 10 minutes or less. Ms. Basie will then present the administration's witnesses and other evidence. After each witness has been examined and cross-examined by counsel for Mr. Oswald, members of the board are permitted to ask further questions of the witness, and the attorneys may follow up with further questions based on the answers given to board questions. After Ms. Basie has presented the administration's witnesses, Mr. McDorman will have the right to present witnesses to testify on the behalf of Mr. Oswald. We will follow the same process for those witnesses that we followed with Ms. Basie's witnesses. After all of the witnesses have testified, Ms. Basie and Mr. McDorman will be allowed to present brief closing arguments. Ms. Basie will go first, then Mr. McDorman, then Ms. Basie will be allowed to rebuttal. Each attorney will be allowed a total of 10 minutes for their closing arguments. Please note that your rebuttal also counts as a part of those 10 minutes. The board will make every effort to comply with the rules of evidence, but since none of the board members here are attorneys, our board attorney, Mr. Hatley, who introduced himself just a moment ago, will be ruling on any objections, and I do understand that the attorneys have agreed to him doing so. However, if there is an important issue raised about something as the relevance, in regards to the relevance of particular evidence, we may briefly adjourn for a closed session so that the entire board may discuss the issue with legal counsel. We do ask, however, that the evidence be limited to that which is relevant to the two issues that we are being asked to consider this evening. Number one, did Mr. Oswald engage in the conduct alleged in the notice of charges? And two, if he did, should the board terminate his contract based upon immoral conduct or the willful or persistent violation of a state law or board policy? After the evidence has been submitted, counsel for the administration will be permitted to make a closing statement. Like we mentioned, not to exceed 10 minutes. Counsel for Mr. Oswald will also be permitted to make a closing argument not to exceed 10 minutes. At that point, this meeting will be adjourned. We will then wait to receive a transcript of the hearing, which we expect to receive on July 6th. Within seven days after that, so seven days after July 6th, the board will hold another special meeting in closed session to reach its decision. Mr. Oswald will be given a written copy of the board's decision within three days after that closed meeting. Are there any questions from either side before we begin the hearing?
No.
I would ask before we begin for the court reporter to administer an oath to the members of the Board of Education.
Do you swear or, for the side of the board, you may solely on the evidence presented during this hearing?
I do.
I do.
Please note, all members did agree to the oath. We now will begin the hearing, starting with an opening statement by Ms. Basie.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the Board of Education and Mr. Hatley. As Mr. Murdock stated, I'm Michelle Basie here this evening on behalf of the District Administration. We recognize that consideration of a tenured teacher's employment is one of the most difficult functions that you have as members of the Board of Education, and this is not a matter that the administration has taken lightly. The vision of the district states that you are a district that reflects a culture of respect and acceptance, and you have made specific commitments to sustaining positive relationships among students, staff, families, and community members, and a commitment to continuing a safe and caring environment for your students. The reason we are here tonight is pretty simple. A teacher has engaged in conduct that the administration believes is wholly inconsistent with that vision and those commitments, and more specifically with your Board of Education policy. And the administration feels that that conduct has jeopardized the safe and caring community at Pleasantly Middle School. Through the evidence tonight, you will hear that Mr. Oswald repeated the N-word twice in the presence of two students. Both of those students reported their concern. This is a violation of the board's own policies, which require that staff maintain courteous and professional relationships with students. Mr. Oswald repeated this word twice despite numerous trainings on the importance of positive relationships, trauma-informed education, cultural sensitivity, and social emotional learning. Mr. Oswald's conduct in this instance caused harm to students and the community. Accordingly, Dr. Buck, who's here with me as your superintendent and to whom you have charged with upholding your policies, is recommending termination of Mr. Oswald's contract for immoral conduct and for willful violation of Board of Education policy. We appreciate your attention and thoughtful consideration of this matter this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Basie. We will now hear the opening statement from Mr. McDorman.
Thank you. I want to make sure that the board understands that there's been a joint stipulation of facts that were agreed to. The reason that I think that that's important is because, based upon what Ms. Basie just said, it was the agreement that the claim made by this other student was not in any respect part of the reason of why we're here today with respect to that. But since it's been brought up, I think I feel compelled to address that, and I think it's appropriate that it's addressed, because what the evidence is going to be in this case is that Mr. Oswald on May 6th was visiting with a fellow teacher in the mezzanine of the building where lunch was being held. I'm sure you as board members understand that better than I do, as I understand the, because of COVID, the conventional use of the lunchroom required expansion into the mezzanine area. While he was visiting with that teacher, the two of them heard Student A, who is the subject matter of this matter, utter a racial slur. Because the teacher was on duty for the classroom, and that was, that's Casey Gilforth is the other teacher I'm referring to, Mr. Oswald offered to escort the student to the stat office, as he knew the student, since he'd been escorting her for about a week before that to her bus at the close of the school day. So he took her to the stat office, requested from the secretary, since he did not have his laptop with him and have an electronic form, what is known in this district, and I'm seeing the board's more familiar than I am with that, the green slip or a discipline referral. He filled it out, as he's been instructed to do in the 27 years that he's been an instructor here, as long as that green slip has been in existence, to accurately state what he heard the student do and what he will testify or what she did. What he will testify to, that this has been consistently what he's been told to do in his employment with this district, is to accurately state, even if it contains profanity, or in this instance, a claim of a racial slur, to use it exactly. And that's consistent with what I believe is board policy, because on your website, you address another type of situation of bullying, in which there's three, there's three documents relate to that, and you'll see those in evidence, which show specifically, or provides one for parents or students and one for teachers to report. And one paragraph of that specifically directs the teacher to put down in exact words what was heard or said, whether it was profanity or racial slurs. Now, if you've had a chance to review that green slip, you will note that when he did put down the words of the student, he put those in quotation marks, which is generally accepted, meaning what she said, not what he said. He conferred with the student, as he's been trained to do, and you're going to hear not just from him claiming that's a policy. We'll present at least three other instructors, they're going to tell you the same thing, that that's what they've always been told to do, and up until Mr. Oswald was suspended was the way they would have done it. But any event, he approached the student, talked to her, was not aware of this other student, and in fact, stated exactly what was in the quotation marks for her to confirm. And what you'll hear from other teachers is, they've been instructed to do this because if they don't, and the student then denies what's said, they have to refer it back, or they have to not enforce the discipline, because there's been a denial. So they've instructed the staff to get it right in the beginning, so that when we're dealing with the discipline thing, we're not dealing with the student claiming, I didn't say that, or it's not accurate. So based upon his understanding, his training, and his knowledge and experience, teacher, he did just that. For some reason, the student began laughing, at that time, he realized that there was another student in the room that was directly behind him, and apparently they knew each other. At that time, Student A asked him to repeat it, so he did. That essentially was it. In fact, he was ready to leave, and he was asked if he could escort Student A to her next room assignment, as the principal, the, or vice, or assistant principal that would be in charge of this, I believe that would have been Mr. Lenquist, would in fact, did not have time to see her. At that point, he was not certain, he thought this was over with. This was on Thursday, May 6th. Nothing occurred on May 7th. On May 10th, though, is when this episode took a dramatic turn. Now also, what the evidence is going to be, is that when Brian Lenquist, Assistant Principal, interviewed Student A, he did confirm that she uttered this racial slur, and as a result of that, received one-day ISS in-school suspension, by your definitions. At that time, she told him that Mr. Oswald had read the words out loud. Now, there was no report by Mr. Lenquist of that as being in violation of any known code or regulation for him actually saying the word. On May 10th, when Dr. Sharp arrived at his building that early that morning, he's first addressed by Mr. Lenquist, told him there was a situation going on with respect to the discipline. But this situation was a dramatic turn from what we're here about today, and that was, it was a claim that this other student had made, that Mr. Oswald, during the course of that action in the stat office, had turned and looked him directly in the eye, and aggressively, as his father said in the email, referred to him by the N-word and asked him what he was staring at. I can assure you, if that's the case, we wouldn't be here today. But, we had a phone call from a, from a mother of another child that this child was riding in the car with that apparently first made this statement, and then told his father. Now, obviously, that's a more serious event, and what you'll see from the evidence is that when Dr. Carlson started his investigation on May 14th, he wrote the concern, and the only thing that he wrote is, John H. reported concerns by email regarding Joe Oswald. Mr. H. states that his son reported that Mr. Oswald turned and looked him and looked into my son's eyes and aggressively stated, and he puts in quotation marks in with three asterisks, ER, what are you looking at? So that's how this investigation began. That was on May 10th, on Monday. Mr. or Dr. Sharp and Mr. Lenquist began immediately interviewing people, and they brought in, obviously brought in Mr. Oswald. He emphatically denied, number one, he never said the word, he said he was simply repeating, as he'd been told to do, to the student what he believed she said for purposes of referring it, that he never called her nor any, this other student, any type of racial slur. In addition to that, in interviewing him, they also interviewed Student A, who was the subject matter of the discipline who was brought to the office. She confirmed exactly what Mr. Oswald said, that he did not say that to that student. Therefore, we entered into a stipulation, as I thought, because I thought my understanding of what you're about here is, because it hasn't been confirmed what, if anything, this young man said, because his dad refused to allow him to be interviewed. So we don't know what he heard or what was said, despite what was said in the opening statement, and instead, this has resulted in why we're here today. I apologize, I'm not used to, is doing trial work to be limited to 10 minutes in an opening statement, because this story is much more than 10 minutes, but I will recognize what you've said, and I assume my time's up, and I can assure you that the evidence that we present will satisfy you that there's not a basis to terminate Joe Oswald. Thank you.
I do appreciate you recognizing the time, sir. Thank you. At this point, Ms. Basie, you can call your first witness, and then we will swear in each witness as they are called.
Thank you. And also, as Mr. McDorman did mention, we do have a joint stipulation of facts, so we would request that that be admitted into evidence as Exhibit One, administration's Exhibit One.
Exhibit One will be admitted.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and call Dr. David Carlson, please.
We will swear you in here at this time. Dr. Carlson, do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you will give in this matter is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Basie, you're free to go.
Thank you. Can you please state your name for the record, Dr. Carlson?
David Carlson.
And what is the position that you hold with the district?
Executive Director of Human Resources.
How long have you been in this position?
This is my fourth year in this role.
And prior to this position, what other positions have you held?
I was principal at Summit Lakes Middle School for six years, assistant principal at Campbell Middle School here in Lee Summit for eight years, and before that, I worked in Liberty School District for five years as a teacher, summer school principal, director of summer school.
What are some of your main job duties as the Executive Director of Human Resources?
In Human Resources, I'll work with hiring, working through recruitment, grow your own program for our district, I place student teachers, I work with unemployment, I also work with ensuring board policies are being followed, terminations, and discipline of staff.
Is one of your responsibilities conducting investigations?
Yes, it is.
When did you first become aware that Mr. Oswald may have violated board When did you first become aware that Mr. Oswald may have violated board policy?
I believe it was around May 10th. I had received an email from Dr. Delsem or Dr. Buck sharing a claim that it came from a school parent.
Okay. And what happened next?
I took that email, and I was directed to conduct an investigation according to Board Policy AC because of the claims that were in that email. So then from there, I began an investigation.
Okay, I'm going to ask you to turn to Exhibit 4 in your binder there. I emailed them.
Linda has one, yes.
You ready? Good to go. Okay. Dr. Carlson, do you recognize what this exhibit is?
Yes, this is the investigation file I used with this matter regarding Mr. Oswald.
And this appear to be a true and accurate copy of your Policy AC investigation file?
Yes, it is.
And was this file made, you created this file at the time that you conducted the investigation?
That's right.
I'm going to ask that Exhibit 4 be admitted into evidence.
Any objection?
No objection.
Exhibit 4 is admitted.
Thank you. There, Dr. Carlson, there are several sections of this report. Can you please take us through and tell us what each section is?
Sure. So the first two pages are the executive summary of the investigation that I composed and sent to Dr. Delsem. The next part is approximately three pages, which is my investigation notes from my meeting with Joe Oswald and Charles Brooks. Next page is my notes from a phone conversation with parent Mr. H. Next section is the building investigation notes that I had secured as part of my investigation process. Next is the email that was given to me as the source of the concern, then confidentiality statement, and administrative leave letter.
Thank you. So you mentioned, I think it's page 11 of this exhibit?
Excuse me for the record, can we refer to it by their Bates number?
Yes, LSR 7-0011.
Thank you.
Is this the exhibit that you were referring to, or is this email, is this the email that you were referring to that you received that prompted this investigation?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so tell me the first step of your investigation after you got this email.
First, I reviewed the email to look at pertinent information, then I reached out to Building Administration to secure their investigation notes, details, information from there, asked by phone about other information that I might need to look for, gathered those notes, and then composed interview questions. I determined from there, I needed to visit with Mr. Oswald and probably one student that was involved in the matter. Then I set up a meeting with Mr. Oswald.
Did you speak with Building Administration?
I did.
Who did you speak to?
Primarily David Sharp, principal of Pleasantly Middle School.
And did he provide you information about the facts that they had at that point?
He did, and those are in that investigation file, Bates Stamp, page 7 is where that begins.
And what were those facts that he shared with you?
Um...
Just summary.
Sure, that he had received concerns from a couple parents, at least two, if not more, about an incident that had occurred and the use of a racial slur by a staff member. Then it also has in there his meetings with those folks, as well as his interviews of staff, including Mr. Oswald and a student.
So after speaking with Dr. Sharp, did your understanding of what the facts maybe change from what you had read in the email?
Yes, the building investigation did not match up with what the email had shared, specifically. So then I needed to form my questions, and then from there, took the Building Administration investigation to compose my questions, to find out the facts of what happened by visiting, and then visiting with Mr. Oswald.
And did you speak with Mr. Oswald?
I did, yes.
What did Mr. Oswald tell you during that conversation?
So I'm going to refer to my investigation notes from my meeting with Joe Oswald and Charles Brooks. That was on May 12th. That's on Bates Stamp, page 3 of Section 4. And I began by just asking him to describe what had happened that day in student administration. And Joe went through and started with saying, "Those were not my words. I was reading off what was said out loud." He did ask me what the accusation was, and I shared with him that the accusation was that he had said the N-word in front of students. He then described that he was walking through the mezzanine and approached the supervisor, then heard a commotion, a student yelling across to another student, he saw Student A standing up. He offered to take that student to student administration. He was speaking with the lunchroom supervisor, he was not on duty supervising lunch at that time. And the lunchroom supervisor said sure, so he walked the student down to student administration. He asked the student administration secretary for a green slip, she handed him one. Then Mr. Oswald described filling out the green slip and the situation of what had happened with Student A. He was asked if there were, he asked the student if there were any other details he knew, if there was other students involved, and he just gathered the information from the green slip from the student, is what he described. He then went over to the student and described processing that with the, green slip with the student. And Mr. Oswald mentioned at that point, in the last couple of years, when a student uses specific language, that you confirm the student said those things. You see an indented bullet in my notes there, because I had asked clarification about that and who had given him that direction. And he had said it had been suggested by student administration that I write down specifically what was said and process with the student, and that the student agrees that what is written is correct, is what Joe described at that point. Written green slips, Joe described writing green slips in the past and when students denying saying something. So that's why he did this practice of confirming what was on the green slip. Joe described processing with Student A and trying to be discreet facing her, and he said that he had read what was written and asked if that was correct. I then confirmed with him that the green slip we were talking about was dated May 6th and showed him the image that you'll see on Bates Stamp, page 8, at the top of that page, which is the green slip. And Mr. Oswald confirmed that that was the green slip that he had completed. And then he said again, "Not my words, I was confirming what I heard." He described the student's initial reaction, that she was kind of laughing about it. And then they said that there was someone behind him that had caught his attention, and he glanced around and saw another student there. He described not being able to tell if the student was there or whether or not, when he'd walked up, could have been there when he walked in, he wasn't sure, but then he did recognize the student was there. He described, Joe described, he was kneeling next to Ava at a little desk next to the chair as he was writing on that desk. He noticed the other student, then refocused on Student A, and said something like, "Not sure why this is funny," after he had read the green slip, and he was just trying to process what had happened and get it down from the green slip. Mr. Oswald said he may have asked her again if this is what happened, she didn't respond, and then said something to the effect of, "If you're not saying anything, then..." He basically was saying, the student wasn't confirming it, so he was confirming that, "Since you're not saying anything, I'm going to take that what I've written here is accurate and correct." He described the student administration secretary heard his cellphone go off, and she was asking for the cellphone to be brought to her desk, and he looked on either side of the student, just checking the situation, supervising the space. He then asked the students what they were working on, and student administration secretary asked Student A what class they were going to do a hall pass, e-hall pass is what Mr. Oswald described. And then that person asked Joe if he could escort her to that class, which he said he would, and she'd be called up later in the day. So they left the hall, no conversation, he walked first and then took the student to the classroom. He described walking into the room first, he wanted to be discreet and just casually talk to the teacher in that classroom, the student then went in, took their seat, and he left. Mr. Oswald described that that was what happened. He described not calling anyone a name and "did not speak my words" is how he described it. He talked about his character, his dignity, and how he was raised, and that he wouldn't violate Policy AC. And he talked about caring for all of his students and being accused of something he would never say. So then I, my next prompt, after him describing the situation and me taking notes on that, I asked him specifically about the green slip and specifically about the word that he stated, the racial slur. He then described that he had read from the green slip, as he had in the past, and he wanted to get confirmation, did not see her say it, he heard someone say it, saw her standing up, and the only reason he knew it was hers because he had escorted her to the bus a couple weeks prior, and he was trying to build rapport with her, so he kind of knew the student and recognized her voice. So to get further clarification on the process here and what he said, I asked to get a better understanding, you know, if the F-word was said by a student, would you speak that aloud to, in front of children or in front of students, to clarify that green slip? Mr. Oswald's response is that there are instances where I have processed, I think I had before, he said he probably would. He couldn't remember a specific instance, but did say he does this discreetly when he does. I did ask him if he'd used the racial slur in this manner in the past, he said no, he'd not been presented with, and I also asked if he had ever taught content in a class or anything remotely where he would have said this word, and he said no. I then asked about the history with the students involved. He generally spoke of knowing Student A from what he had mentioned earlier in the interview. He talked about knowing the other stu, not knowing the other student that was in student administration, but knowing his older brother and had worked with that student in the past, the older brother. I then clarified, you know, the racial slur, when is it okay to say or use that word? And he said it was never okay to use that word, it's condescending, derogatory, a word that should never be used. He was upset that she had used the word, he was trying to be accurate, he'd been told to write down exactly what was said, and that's what he had done. So then I further asked why he read that aloud. He described not knowing what his thought process was, but he's wanting to process with the student and be accurate, and for her to confirm the accuracy of what was written. He said he read it right off the green slip. When finished reading, she was snickering, kind of laughing, is what Joe described. I asked if there was anything else to share, and you can see there, he says that he told the truth. He was, he's the first to correct any student that uses that word toward another, even if a student of similar ethnicity, and not care if it's with each other, it's not okay to say that word. And he says he kind of tells students, "You're above that, you don't need to use that word in school." It's not the first time he had heard it from a student in his career, and he had not had any issues similar to this, and ended with saying he cares about kids, school, and the district. So that was my, that was my investigation, my interview with Mr. Oswald.
So after reading the email from Mr. H., reviewing the building file and your conversation with Mr. Oswald, what was your understanding of what had happened in the office on May 6th?
My understanding was that Mr. Oswald had used the N-word two times in the presence of those students for the purpose of confirming what was on the green slip.
Did you ask him specifically about the allegations that were in the email?
We spoke, as I mentioned, at the very beginning of generally the concerns, but really, my investigation, when I started it and met with Joe, had turned to him using the N-word, because that's what the building investigation had shown. So really, I was investigating, had he said that word in the presence of students?
And based on your investigation, what did you determine with respect to policy violations?
Well, based on the preponderance of evidence, I did not find a violation of Board Policy AC, but I did find a violation of Board Policy GBCB, Staff Conduct, and GCPD-AP, and said, you know, saying this word, the use of this word is unacceptable in schools and in any context when you're speaking with kids.
Looking at Exhibit 4 and what's labeled as LSR 7-0001 and 0002, I think you said that was the executive summary of your findings, is that correct?
Yes.
And did you share your findings with Dr. Delsem?
Yes, I did. Per Board Policy, I provided this written report to her.
Okay, and did you also review your findings with Dr. Buck?
I did, yes.
If you could please turn to Exhibit 8, Administration's Exhibit 8.
Okay.
Do you recognize this document?
Yes, this is Board Policy AC.
And is this an adopted resolution or policy of the Board?
Yes, it is.
And does this appear to be a true and accurate copy of that policy?
Yes.
I'm going to ask for Exhibit 8 to be admitted into evidence?
Exhibit 8 is admitted.
Thank you. You mentioned that you found no violation of this policy, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Why did you make that determination?
Well, based specifically on the sections titled Investigation, and then also, which outlines that the preponderance of evidence standards to be used to determine if a violation has occurred, and then also using the definitions of discrimination and then harassment, and what Board Policy AC describes harassment as, based on illegal harassment and protected class, and I did not find that that was violated.
And is there a specific reason you found it, it did not violate that definition of harassment?
Yes, harassment in this Board Policy stalk, speaks of school or work environment becoming permeated with intimidation, ridicule, insult that sufficiently or severely or is pervasive enough that it unreasonably alters the environment. And just with the incident, with the history I was able to find, I could not find that it rose to that level of a violation.
Even though you did not find it was a violation of Policy AC, were you still concerned about the conduct?
Yes.
Why?
Because it's not okay to say the N-word in front of our students of color and in front of kids, and I found it to be a violation of other Board Policies.
If you could turn to Exhibit 9, please. Do you recognize this document?
Yes, this is Board Policy GBCB, Staff Conduct.
And is this also an adopted policy of the Board of Education?
Yes, it is.
And does this appear to be a true and accurate copy of that policy?
Yes.
I'd like to ask that Exhibit 9 also be admitted into evidence, please.
Exhibit 9 is admitted.
Did you find a violation of Policy GBCB?
Yes, I did.
What section specifically did you think that Mr. Oswald had violated?
Well, the first sentence states, "Board of Education expects every employee to act professionally, ethically, and responsibly, use good judgment, and do what's necessary to maintain a safe learning environment and positive relations with, positive relations with students, parents, guardians, coworkers, and the public." And then Part 2 specifically says, "Maintain courteous and professional relationships with students, parents, guardians, other district employees, and the public." And then Part 10 talks about communicating clearly and professionally, employees will not use profanity, will not raise their voices unless necessary, et cetera.
And what conduct specifically by Mr. Oswald did you believe violated those sections of policy?
Saying the N-word.
Did you consider this violation of policy to be serious?
Yes.
Can you turn to Exhibit 11, please?
I'm there.
Do you recognize this document?
Yes, this is the administrative procedure that goes with Board Policy GCPD.
Is this also an adopted policy or procedure of the Board of Education?
Yes, it is.
And does this appear to be a true and accurate copy of that procedure?
Yes.
I'm going to ask that Exhibit 11 be admitted into evidence, please.
Exhibit 11 is admitted.
In your report, you identify this as a violated policy. Can you explain the basis for that determination?
Yes, this document references, you know, violations of Board Policy and the discipline that would come from violations of Board Policy, so I reference that also. Section A has specific items, and I found this to be a violation of seven immoral conduct. Section A has specific items, and I found this to be a violation of seven immoral conduct.
And on what basis do you believe that this constitutes immoral conduct?
Immoral conduct is conduct that's always wrong, and my belief is that it's never okay to say the N-word in front of students.
What was, my understanding in looking at this procedure, there's a range of consequences. What was your recommendation after determining that Mr. Oswald had engaged in violations of board policy? And you could certainly refer back to Exhibit 4.
Exhibit 4, Bate Stamp 2, in my recommendation, I recommended that actions include discipline according to board policy GCPD-AP and training for Joe Oswald to ensure professionalism.
Did you specify what type of discipline Mr. Oswald should receive?
No.
GCPD-AP has a wide range of consequences, is that correct?
It has anywhere from a first written warning, second written warning, final written warning, and then discharge.
Okay. Who made the decision about what consequence was appropriate for Mr. Oswald?
Dr. Buck.
Why did you recommend training for Mr. Oswald?
So I don't have the authority to, nor does the superintendent have authority to terminate a tenured teacher, so not knowing what would result, if Joe Oswald remained working with us, I believed he needed training to better understand why it's not okay to say that word in front of our students.
Are district staff expected to comply with Board of Education policy?
Yes.
How are district staff made aware that they must comply with Board of Education policy?
Variety of ways, and when people are first hired, they sign an acknowledgement form, there's trainings through safe schools, there's trainings at the building level, I believe that it's also, well, it is a part of their contract they sign each year as well.
Are you aware of whether staff are provided any training regarding the use of racial slurs or related conduct?
Yes, yeah, we do training variety of ways, and one of the ways we do that is through safe schools, and we specifically have a training in safe schools related to that.
Can you please turn to Exhibit 6?
I have it.
Do you recognize this document?
Yes, this is the training history in safe schools for Joe Oswald.
And does this appear to be a true and accurate copy of that record?
Yes.
And is this a record that's maintained by human resources?
Yes, it is.
I would like to ask for Exhibit 6 to be admitted into evidence.
Exhibit 6 is admitted.
Based on this record, does it appear that Mr. Oswald completed the required safe schools training?
Yes.
And is there any training in here that you can identify that is relevant to this incident?
Yeah, there's a training titled Diversity Awareness Staff to Student.
And looking at Exhibit 6, when did Mr. Oswald complete this training?
He last completed it August 22nd, 2020.
And is this training that staff members may repeat, like on an annual basis, for example?
Yes, safe schools trainings are required each year, and from here, I can see Mr. Oswald completed in the previous years as well.
Okay. Could you please turn to Exhibit 7 now?
Yes.
Do you recognize this document?
Yes, these are screenshots from the safe school training, Diversity Awareness Staff to Student.
And are these screenshots that you took of the training?
Yes, I provided them to you.
And is this a true and accurate copy of those screenshots from the training?
Yes.
I'd ask for Exhibit 7 to be admitted into evidence, please.
Exhibit 7.
No objection, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Exhibit 7 is admitted.
Thank you. Dr. Carlson, can you please read for us the portion of this that you believe is relevant training for Mr. Oswald with respect to the use of racial slurs?
The second slide starts, "Schools and school staff members may also face consequences when they say or do something that intentionally or unintentionally causes offense to a student, family, or community group. The result can be a loss of confidence in the school by the family or community. Insensitive actions or words may also result in legal action against the school. In addition, the staff member may be subject to disciplinary action as well."
Dr. Carlson, do you believe that the district has made staff sufficiently aware that use of a racial slur in the presence of students would be considered a violation of board policy?
Yes.
As you sit here today, do you believe that Mr. Oswald's use of the N-word, repeating it aloud twice, constituted a serious violation of board policy?
Yes.
I have no further questions for Dr. Carlson.
Thank you, Ms. Basie. Mr. McDormand, you may cross-examine.
Dr. Carlson, in your direct testimony, you gave a definition of immoral conduct. You said something that's always wrong, I wrote that down. Is that right?
Yes, that's what I said.
Can you point the board to anywhere within board policies or other regulations or publications that that term is defined?
The term immoral conduct?
Yes.
I don't believe that's in board policy, the definition of that word.
Is it anywhere else? Is it anywhere that staff would be apprised of what immoral conduct is?
Beyond the statement in the policy, specifically defined, not in board policy, no.
Well, it's not generally defined either, is it? The word you used, something about being always wrong, is anywhere you can point that to me?
No.
I've heard the term racial slur. Is there any document within Lee Summitt R7 School District, whether it's board policy or not, that defines racial slur?
That defines racial slur? No, I think it explains itself.
Well, students are given a student handbook, are they not? Or it's online, am I correct?
Yes.
If you'd look at Exhibit SS, please.
I'm there.
Do you recognize that document?
Yes, looks like the Pleasantly Middle School Student Handbook from last year.
And it's for the specific middle school that Mr. Oswald was assigned to, is that right?
Correct.
All right. Would offer Exhibit SS?
Out objection, Exhibit SS is admitted.
Can you show me anywhere within this student handbook for 2021, Exhibit SS, that the students are given a definition of racial slur?
Let me take a moment to review.
Sure.
I don't believe the phrase racial slur is defined in our student handbook. But if I'm missing it somewhere, please point it out to me.
Well, I couldn't find it either.
Okay.
So I was hoping maybe with your experience, you'd know where I might look for it.
I see that it talks about racial threats, talks about inappropriate things, does not define what a racial threat is, racial slur, as I'm looking at the harassment page, assuming that's what you want me to look at.
Now, do you recall me taking your deposition?
Yes.
Last week? And do you recall telling me that your investigation was not triggered by the green slip that Joe Oswald turned in on May 6th? Is that correct?
That's correct, yes, my, the investigation was triggered by the concern about him using the word.
Well, that's not actually correct either, because if we look at, let's go back to Exhibit 4.
Okay.
You started your investigation by providing first a concern, then findings, and summary, am I correct?
That's right.
All right. Let's talk about what your concerns were when you started this investigation. That's the three sentences or three lines below, isn't it?
Yes, under the heading Concern, yes.
Read that into the record if you would, please.
Certainly. Mr. H. reported concerns by email regarding Joe Oswald. Mr. H. states that his son reported that Mr. Oswald turned and looked into my son's eyes and aggressively stated, "N-word, what are you looking at?"
Your initial concerns had nothing to do with the green slip, did it?
Correct, it was about him using the N-word.
Yes, based upon that email that was received by the district on May 10th.
That is when I learned of it, yes.
And when we talk about an AC investigation, how does that differ from a GBCB investigation? What's the significance of starting with an AC investigation?
An AC investigation is specifically related to discrimination or harassment based on a protected class.
And is the reason that you started an AC investigation based upon the statement made by Mr. H. as to what Joe Oswald did to his son on May 6th? Looked him in the eyes aggressively and said, "The N-word, what are you staring at?" That's what he was accused of doing, isn't that true?
Yes, that was the initial email that we received that started the investigation.
And under AC, that's serious. That's discrimination, it could be harassment, it could be bullying, couldn't it?
Could be, depends on the facts of the situation.
But, all right, why do we start with AC as opposed to GBCB?
Because of the use of a racial slur and race being involved, which is a protected class based on our laws.
So are you telling the board that you would have started there regardless, even though you didn't list it as a concern?
Objection, I think that mischaracterizes his testimony.
Will you repeat the question, please, Mike? Will you please repeat the question?
Let me just move on. By May 14th, you were already aware of the fact that student A had confirmed what Mr. Oswald had told you, that he had said nothing to this other student, and more importantly, did not look him in the eyes and aggressively state, "N-word, what are you staring at?"
I don't know that your statement, as I'm going back and looking at my investigation file from the building investigation, I don't know that that accurately represents student A's investigation notes. The notes that I reviewed, which are on Bate Stamp Page 9, the student said, "Mr. Oswald brought me down. Ms. McGonaght asked for the paper, he repeated what I said to the girl, he was reading what he wrote down, and then she said, 'Hold on, I'm in shock because he's white and that's an offensive word. I thought he would have said the N-word or something, and that's why I asked him to repeat what he said. I was in shock as I was laughing.'" J., student J. heard it too, basically that was it, he just read it back to me, I don't remember him saying he was reading it back to me for accuracy from Mr. Lindquist. Student J. was sitting there instead as well, I was sitting on a little chair, student J. was in the study carol to the right. Student A stated that Mr. Oswald did not speak to student J., not that he saw, or she saw, he just heard it too. We were just laughing that he said it as we were surprised, not that I saw. Coach Oswald left Dad with me and walked me to another teacher's class.
Well, fair to say that if you thought that Joe Oswald had done what was to that student on May 6th, J.H. I'm talking about, had looked him in the eye and aggressively stated the words we've discussed here, your recommendation wouldn't have been, would have been for termination, would it not?
I suppose it could have been. I typically do not recommend termination in AC investigations because there's other factors involving with the supervisor, the work history, things like that. I think what you're asking, would it be more severe if a teacher looked a person in the eye and said that directly to a student versus saying it in their presence, and I didn't analyze that, I mean, I suppose you could debate that.
Well, you are part of the administration, am I correct?
Yes.
All right, and you're represented here by Michelle Basie, you understand that?
Yes.
All right. Look at Exhibit 1, if you would, please. Have you seen this before today?
Yes, I have.
So are you aware of the fact that administration has stipulated to these 25 paragraphs?
Yes, I'm aware of that.
Are you familiar with paragraph 21?
I see it here.
And it says, "Student A confirmed, this is stipulated, to Dr. Sharp and Brian Lindquist, that Mr. Oswald did not call student J.H. a racial slur." That's a stipulated fact, you understand that?
Yes.
And the board is bound, or the administration is bound by that, the same as we are?
That's my understanding, yes.
In paragraph 23, student A did not claim Mr. Oswald called her a racial slur. You aware of that stipulation as well?
Yes.
And also that student A's conduct in the mezzanine on May 6th was confirmed by Brian Lindquist, resulting in one-day ISS for student A. Do you see that?
Yes, I do.
So that means what Mr. Oswald submitted as the green slip, Mr. Lindquist confirmed, and the student received punishment for uttering a racial slur.
That's my understanding.
Based on that green slip? All right, so his confirmation of what she said was utilized by administration in administering punishment to student A. Am I correct? Am I correct?
Assigning a discipline consequence, yes.
And then finally, the last paragraph, the recommendation for termination as stating the notice of charges is solely based on Mr. Oswald's use of the N-word twice as he repeated what Student A had said in the mezzanine and what he reported on the green slip. Do you see that?
Yes, I do.
And finally, the recommendation is not based on a finding that Mr. Oswald engaged in the conduct alleged in the May 10th email from Mr. H. Do you see that?
Yes.
So that's not before the board for consideration, do you agree? By that stipulation, or do you know?
I agree that the stipulation of facts are agreed upon by the two parties in considering the facts of the matter.
Now, did you not tell me during your deposition that you couldn't think of any reason the N-word should be used in the district?
Yes, yeah, I remember us specifically discussing that, and, and I also remember clarifying with you that saying the N-word in front of our students is never going to be acceptable.
Even the use in literature classes, isn't that true?
That's not what I said.
Right, is that your position?
I believe we don't use it in curriculum texts, and when we do discover it's being used, it's removed. This year.
As, so as of this year, is that, that's the case?
Like, in the past, it has been too, but I know through this matter specifically, we've talked about a book that was removed because of the use of a racial slur.
All right. Can you take a look at Exhibit TT and tell me, you recognize it or not?
Michelle Basie had shown me this document. I hadn't seen it previous to this matter.
What is this document?
Objection, I think he just said he has only, has knowledge of it because I gave him a copy of the exhibits.
So you don't know what it is? If you don't, that's fine.
No, I don't.
All right. Have you ever seen the movie The Butler?
I think I have, if I have, it's been a while, but I think I, I feel like I've seen it.
You have, have looked at and reviewed the training that Joe Oswald has received. That's Exhibit 6, I believe?
Yes. I'm, yes, I'm at Exhibit 6.
All right.
And I have reviewed this document.
And I think you said you referred to something on August 22nd, and I assume that's on page 8 of 8. Is it the Diversity Awareness Staff to Student Full Course?
Yes, that's what I was referencing.
All right. Have you taken that course?
Yes, I have.
You produced as Exhibit 7, two slides, am I correct?
Yes.
Right. Were there any slides that addressed specifically racial slurs? Where the word came up and was defined in any respect, or? Let's just start with, did it come up?
I do not recall specifically, and I have to go back and watch the training, I don't recall the, it did talk about things like race, but I don't know that you used the word, phrase racial slur specifically, or if it defined it.
Now, you've referred to training through the Safe School Act?
Not the Safe School Act, we use a, a software platform called Safe Schools to deploy training to our staff.
All right, that's, so it's simply called Safe Schools?
Yeah, Vector Solutions Safe Schools, it's their, their online platform they use. Not, not to be confused with the Safe Schools Act in the state of Missouri.
Are you, you've indicated that, I believe you have, and you can correct me if you're wrong, that new staff is, is also provided training when they come onboard?
Yeah, we'll train new teachers, we train current teachers, um, yes.
My understanding is that the use of this green slip has been around almost as old as I am, a long time.
It, uh, the phrase "green slip" was unique to Lee Summit when I came in 2003, and, um, yeah, it's been around a while, and it'd been here before I came in '03.
Is there training provided to new staff as to how to fill this out?
Yeah, when I, yes, when I was an assistant principal and principal, I recall there being that, being part of our training for new teachers, and I know that, I can remember when we transitioned to Power School and using electronic log entries, there had to be training that assistant principals would have, would do with staff on how to use that system.
Has there been training provided to staff at any time that you're aware of that instructs them if they're going to be quoting a student verbatim, not to read it out loud?
I couldn't quote specific training today, but in my years in the district, what I'm familiar with is staff not using profanity, racial slurs, or, or any language that would be inappropriate to say in, in front of students, is what I'm familiar with.
So in your mind, is, let me ask you this, you use the word profanity, is that defined anywhere?
I don't know that as a school district, we have a definition of profanity listed.
Is it in the student handbook?
I don't think we use the profane words to define it, or talk about what profanity is, just the common understanding that profanity, the F-word, things like that.
The teachers are mandated to, to fill out these discipline reports, the green slips are on the electronic version, says they, if they observe misconduct by a student, isn't that true?
I don't know that you use the phrase mandated, I mean, and they're not required to, but, you know, there are a lot of ways to work through misconduct with students and, and processing and work through them, but one of the ways is to, to complete your green slip, and there are some situations that are serious enough that when they occur, a, a green slip should be, or a discipline notice should be completed.
They don't have the option not to report it if they believe it's misconduct that is governed by the student discipline?
I don't know that I'd agree with that statement, you know, if a student comes to class unprepared, or, um, you know, is a less serious infraction, or is a disruption in the class, typically there's a process, a commitment process, or redirecting the student before it becomes written down as a green slip or a discipline notice. But if it's, if it's serious enough, then, like, fighting, things like that, it can immediately be something that's sent to the office on a discipline notice or a green slip.
Can you turn to Exhibit RR for me, please?
Yes. I'm there.
All right. You recognize this document?
Yes, Board Policy, JG.
And is it titled Student Discipline?
Yes, it is.
And I believe as part of this exhibit, there's also JGR1 as well, right? With this, am I correct?
Yes, it is.
Going to, the first part of it is a three-page document, is that right?
Yes.
All right. And there's a, a title equity, do you see that?
On the first page?
Yes.
Yes, I do.
All right. First of all, I would offer Exhibit RR.
Any objection?
No objection.
Without objection, Exhibit RR is admitted.
Would you read the first sentence of that paragraph?
Yes, "All district staff are required to enforce district policies, regulations, and procedures in a manner that is consistent, developmentally appropriate, and equitable."
So would you agree with me that that requires staff to enforce the handbook, the student handbook?
Yes, district policies, regulations, procedures, and the staff, student handbook could be considered within that.
According to the stipulation, the Student A received discipline as a result of her conduct on May 6th. Am I correct? We, stipulation was she got one-day ISS?
That was my understanding, that's what I recall from reviewing that.
So what Mr. Oswald deserved was confirmed, and she did receive the appropriate punishment under the, the guidelines of student discipline?
Yes, through my investigation, I did not find any issues with Mr. Oswald addressing the student's conduct, or bringing her to the office, or her receiving discipline for her, her conduct.
And if we go to JGR1? And calling your attention to page 3 of 8, under the title Disrespectful or Disruptive Conduct or Speech?
I see it.
Now, that's, that's a specifically enumerated student violation that would require discipline, am I correct?
Yes, this represents situations where if there's a first offense or subsequent offense, what the consequence would be for, for that, for that conduct.
Within this eight-page document, is there anywhere that racial slur is defined?
I don't believe so.
Is profanity defined?
I don't believe so.
Excuse me, Mr. McDorman, is this a good breaking point? I think we can take a short break.
Yes, it is, we can, that's fine. Five minutes or so, you're thinking?
Yeah, we'll take a, we'll take a five-minute break here, just for the audience, so that'll be about every 90 minutes, just, just as an FYI, just so everybody can kind of know from the schedule.
I'll try to be mindful of that.
Yeah, so fi- five minutes, and we'll try to restart at 6:30, thank you. Okay, we will resume, uh, Mr. McDorman, when you are ready, sir.
Just a moment, and I'll be ready.
Okay.
I want to, if I can, address the, your recommendation. This, that's your two-page or page and a half report I'm referring to, am I correct? Exhibit 4?
Exhibit 4, okay, I have it. Yeah, the executive summary of findings. Exhibit 4, Bates stamp 1, yes.
And looking at, that's LSR 70002, right?
Yes, I have it.
I asked you earlier about the use of the, of this racial slur, and you, you limited it and said it would not include the use in, in literature classes, or in, as far as books. We all know about To Kill a Mockingbird and its use of that. That's a book that's been used in this district, isn't it?
I feel like you asked a couple of questions there. Will you please, will you please break that up into a question?
Are you aware of any literature that's been used in the district in the time that you've been here that might contain the N-word?
Yes.
What are those?
You mentioned one, To Kill a Mockingbird, I believe, has been taught in our district in the past.
Tom Sawyer?
Can't speak to that.
Uncle Berry Finn?
I can't speak to that one either.
Roland Thunder Hear My Cry?
I'm familiar with that book, I think in the past it's been used in the middle school, I can't speak to today.
Do you know if the movie Glory's been shown?
I know it has been in the past, there's a, Pepsi made a, a, a school-appropriate version, I remember years ago.
Do you know if that eliminated the N-word?
I don't recall, I'd have to, I'd have to see it to know. It's been a while.
Well, um, what I want to find out is, are you saying that in, in appropriate situations, the N-word can be used and stated in the district out loud?
No. I, I, and that's what the investigation was about, and I, I think I spoke to that earlier, that for staff sa-
I thought you excluded literary.
One at a time, please.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I, I think what you're asking me is, is, I'm not sure what you're asking me, Mike, if you're asking me, is it okay for staff to say the N-word, my answer is no. If you're asking me if there are times where we may have a book in our library that has the N-word, I, that's possible.
So if a teacher's using one of these books or movies, they can show it, but they, they should not say the words to their students, is what you're saying?
Yeah, I'm saying that our students should hear, should not hear our staff say the N-word.
And that's the complaint with, with Joe Oswald, is not that he wrote the N-word out, which he did in that green slip, am I correct, is, but the fact that he said it out loud?
Correct.
To a student that already had said it that day, right?
In the presence of two students.
Only one of which we can confirm heard it, though. Because the other one, we don't have, we stipulated to that.
Objection, I think that mischaracterizes what has been the stipulation.
Sustained.
You never interviewed the child, did you?
When you say the child, if you're referring to student-
Students, the other student involved, you never interviewed.
I did not interview either of the students that were, that were there.
Well, but Student A was interviewed by Dr. Sharp.
Student A was interviewed by building administration, and the other student that was present was not interviewed based on my investigation. Correct.
And then also not interviewed, I don't know if you include Dr. Sharp in your investigation or not?
I did include Dr. Sharp's investigation notes, interviews, in my investigation, and it's my understanding that the second student that was there when this was said was not interviewed.
At the request of his father.
The father did request that, yes.
So we don't know from that child exactly what he would say, because he was not interviewed.
His father conveyed and conveyed-
Answer my question, we don't know what that child would say specifically, because he was not interviewed. I didn't ask you if his dad conveyed it, I asked you what we know about him.
And I'm trying to give you an accurate representation of the investigation.
I understand that, but I want you to answer my question.
Okay, and say your question again.
Question is, we don't know what that student would say, because he was never personally interviewed.
I cannot speak to the first part of your question, the second part, you're correct, he was never personally interviewed, but I was trying to convey that his father did speak to and spoke for his son, is what he conveyed, which is different than an actual interview with the student.
Which was determined not to be accurate. Student A, that was disciplined, confirmed that Mr. Oswald did not turn and look him aggressively in the eye, and call him the N-word.
I don't recall Student A saying those exact words, if that's what you mean. I did re-
So that, obviously, Mr. Oswald was here to be terminated, but for the benefit of any other staff, if they fill out a green slip, are they to put the exact word down or not?
If you ask me, I asked staff to use an abbreviation for profanity, slurs, things like that.
That's inconsistent with some of your other policies, isn't it?
Depends on the policy and the situation. We do have some policies that specifically state-
Look at Exhibit L for me. Which exhibit, please?
Thank you. L.
L as in lion? Are you familiar with this document?
Yes.
And look at Exhibit K, if you would, too.
I have it.
All right, and then also, as well as M.
I have it.
Those three documents are interrelated, are they not?
These three documents are all administrative forms related to board policy, JFCF regarding bullying, it's a bullying incident report forms and the forms that go with it.
Would offer Exhibits K, L, and M.
Any objection?
No objection.
Without objection, Exhibits K, L, and M are admitted.
Would you agree with me that Exhibit K is for administration, I presume, to complete?
It's a bullying incident school investigation form.
All right. And then Exhibit M, or L, I'm sorry. What is this form?
Bullying incident report form for required reporters, employees, substitutes, and volunteers related to reporting bullying of students.
All right, now, look at paragraph 6 on page 3.
I see it.
It's titled, "Please Describe This Incident," do you see that?
Yes.
Would you read into the record what it says after that?
Yes.
In parentheses.
"Please describe the incident, parentheses, include as much detail as possible, do not quote 'clean up' end quote anything that was said or done. If inappropriate language or gestures were used, include the exact language and describe the exact gestures used."
And that policy can be found on the district's website, can it not?
Yes, it can.
Now, is bullying defined anywhere?
I believe it is.
And where's that?
I think we have it in materials in the district, if you can point me to the section you're talking about.
I don't know, I'm asking you.
Yeah, I generally recall there are places where we have definitions of bullying and trained on what bullying is.
Has there been specific training on these documents with staff?
So these are in the J-series related to student matters, so that wouldn't come out of Human Resources, so I couldn't speak to that, but I do know that out of offices and the instructional side of our district, there are specific trainings related to bullying, how to report that, to be compliant with state guidelines, but-
I want to make sure I understand here, are you telling this board that Joe Oswald's spelling out the N-words you referred to in that green slip, is that a violation or not?
That wasn't the focus of my investigation.
I understand that, that's not my question. Is that a violation or not?
You asked my opinion, and I prefer that staff not use profanity, F-word, N-word, when they write things down. I don't know that that's a violation of policy to write things down accurately on a discipline notice, and that was not a determination in my investigation.
Now, are you saying that Joe Oswald understood this before May 6th?
I would assume so, he's been in the district 27 years, but I can't speak to what Joe understands.
So what you're telling this board is he knew that and intentionally didn't follow it in writing this report and uttering the name, or the word?
Objection, that mischaracterizes the testimony.
Sustained, could you rephrase the question, please?
Are you saying that his writing the word down is a violation of some policy of the board?
Objection, asked and answered.
Sustained, I think he's answered that question.
Yeah, I can answer it.
You already answered it.
You recommended training for Joe Oswald, is that correct?
If you're referring to my summary-
Yes.
-that I wrote, it did recommend training, correct?
What type of training?
You know, in an executive summary, I recommend training, in this situation, I was thinking of diversity, training to better understand how the use of a racial slur, or specifically an N-word in front of students, and in the presence of students could be traumatic and hurts kids, I mean, that's not a word they should hear from staff at school. That's what I was thinking when I was thinking training.
I recall when I took your deposition, that you told me you did review his personnel file.
Yes, I did.
And did you find any form of complaint or reprimand about Joe Oswald in the 27 years he's been with this district, other than this incident?
In his HR personnel file, I did not see written warnings, according to board policy, those things that would come in as violations of board policy happening in his career.
And I think you would agree with me, there's no point in training him if you're going to terminate him.
I can't terminate a tenured teacher, so, okay, yeah, training would, yes, okay, I see your point, yes, if a person is going to be terminated, then they would not be getting training from us, their work with us would end.
Do you think context plays any role in his use of the N-word in this incident?
Yeah, I think context always matters.
Well, there's no dispute that he told you, "I did not call Student A this racial slur," am I correct?
Yes.
In fact, from what you read into the record, or what you testified to, was that he was adamant, "These were not my words."
That is what he said repeatedly during my investigation, yes.
So that's a different context, is it not, than him actually saying, "Oh, yes, I said that, and I'm sorry," or "not sorry," whatever the case may be.
Yeah, I suppose those would be different situations, if that's what you're meaning, yes.
So what other context can we talk, I mean, the context of this, do you agree with me, is important?
Yeah, as I stated, context is always important.
And the context that we have here is that he was simply quoting what the student, he heard the student say in the mezzanine on May 6th?
That was my understanding, yes.
So taking that into consideration, what training are you recommending he should have, if he's retained?
Objection, asked and answered.
Sustained.
Did you take into consideration that Student A asked him to say the word the second time?
Yes. Yeah, I don't remember how she said it specifically, but it was a-
She'd ask you to repeat it.
Yes.
Nothing further.
Any redirect, Ms. Basie?
I just have a few questions. Dr. Carlson, do you think it is possible to define every type of conduct in policy that could be considered unprofessional for a staff member to engage in?
No.
Do you believe the district provides training to staff members so that they have an idea of what constitutes professional conduct?
Yes, along with their, yes.
Along with what else?
Along with their degrees, their experience, you know, courses you take in college, yes.
And Dr. Carlson, are there times when you conduct an investigation, and your ultimate findings as to what happened are different than the initial allegations that were brought to your attention?
Yes, that happens.
Does that mean that the conduct engaged in is any less severe?
It can be, it depends on the facts of the situation, but if it's different, that doesn't mean, it could be more severe, it could be less severe, it depends on the facts of the matter.
When you were a principal in this district, if you got a referral with the N-word written on it, how would you handle that, when processing that referral with the student?
I would have processed with the student, and given the student due process, as required, and I would have asked the student what happened, I wouldn't have said the word, I would have used an abbreviation, like the N-word, is how I had done that.
And your findings did not include a finding of violation of policy because he wrote the N-word on the referral, is that correct?
Correct, my findings were specifically for him saying it in front of students.
Do you believe that the N-word is a racial slur?
Yes, I do.
When you spoke with Mr. Oswald, did he confirm for you that Student JH was in the stad office when he had that conversation with Student A on May 6th that we're talking about here tonight?
Yes, that's how I understood it, from my interview with him. We were speaking of the same people, I didn't not get the sense there was any confusion about who we were talking about.
Okay. I believe you testified that context plays a role in every investigation making a determination, is that correct?
Yes.
And did you take into consideration the context of Mr. Oswald's use of the N-word in this situation?
Yes, I did.
And was that context part of the reason that you did not find a violation of policy AC?
That's correct.
But even in the context that Mr. Oswald used the word, repeating what a student had said in the mezzanine, you still found a violation of board policy, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
And you still consider that a serious violation of board policy, is that correct?
Yes, I do, the N-word's hurtful to students, and they shouldn't hear it from our staff.
And it's your understanding that Mr. Oswald knew that that word was offensive, is that correct?
Yes, he told me it was, and I think I mentioned in my notes that it was an awful hurtful word.
I have no further questions.
Any recross, Mr. McDorman, keeping in mind it needs to be within the scope of her redirect.
All right. Is staff required to report, or administration required to file a report with respect to this type of incident?
Mike, if you're referring to board policy AC investigations, yes, we are required-
The N-word out loud, you said, as far as administration concerns, there's no time that's appropriate, correct?
For staff speaking the N-word, I do not see a time that's appropriate, correct?
That applies to a teacher, a principal, superintendent, if they heard a teacher doing that, that's something that needs to be reported.
It should be addressed, absolutely.
Now, did Brian Lindquist file any type of report with respect to knowing that Joe Oswald, from talking to Student A on May 6th or 7th, that he had said these words, the N-word out loud, did he file a formal report of that?
He did not with me, I can't speak to whether he did or not, but I'm not sure that he was aware of that either.
What do you mean, aware of it, you're saying that's what all the administration knows, or not to say the N-word out loud?
That wasn't what I was saying, yes, I understand that, I am saying that I don't know that Mr. Lindquist was aware of what occurred in student administration that day, is what I meant to say, that's what I was saying.
Are you aware of the fact that he interviewed Student A on, I believe, May 6th, it might have been as late as May 7th, and she told him that Mr. Oswald had said the N-word out loud?
I don't remember him telling me that.
Well, if she told him that, should he have reported it?
Yeah, I think he should have shared that with Dr. Sharp, that if Mr. Oswald was using the N-word in front of him, that should be reported, yes.
It should have been reported as soon as he knew of it.
As soon as possible.
No other questions?
Any further questions, Ms. Basie?
I have no further questions.
I'll let Mr. Murdock take care of board questions.
Okay, so, at this time, board members, you do have an opportunity, if you have any questions for Dr. Carlson, we would do that at this time. It looks like Board Member Hedrick.
I'm trying to get some clarification on dates, et cetera, so I would refer you to Exhibit 4. The pages that are marked 2, 3, excuse me, 3, 4, and 5, those are all your notes, Dr. Carlson, is that an accurate statement?
Yes, it is.
Okay, and those were taken from interv- Okay, and that, those were taken from interview on May 12th? The date that's at the top of that first page?
That's correct.
Okay, and then on Page 6, are those your notes also in your conversation, from your conversation with the parent of J.H. that occurred on May 13th?
Yes, it is.
Okay, and then, on Page 7 of that same exhibit, those notes belong to the building, is that was, do I have that correct?
Yes, you do.
8, 7, 8, 9, and 10 are all from the building, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Does anyone else have any further questions for Dr. Carlson? Board Member Fritchie?
Yes, Dr. Carlson, do you know if our building administration gives, or do you know if they are given specific direction by our administration on how to talk with or coach the staff on how to handle discipline such as this regarding language that may be questionable? Is there a guidebook, or is there a direction or a specific written statement that they are to give training for our staff each year?
So we do have our board policies that speak to how we're to communicate with staff and students, and the buildings do training each year, whether it be how to process with students, whether it be BIST, or with training on, trauma-informed care is another example, on how to work with students, things of that nature. Does that answer your question?
Well, I guess I'm trying to get at is, are, does the administration go specific enough in instruction to staff that they know for sure what's okay and what's not okay? And questioning students and in asking them, or in situations like this, or whether it's profanity, or whatever it is, are they given specific direction, is there anything guideline that tells them specifically what they're supposed to do in that situation?
Yeah, they're required to give due process to students and talk through them in a professional manner, and to, just as it was stated in board policy, you know, not raise their voice, things of that nature, use appropriate language, and that comes in a variety of ways, typically at the building level, as the administration works with folks on how to process work with kids, and then if there's issues or concerns with how a staff member's working with kids, then the administration would work with them on that, coach them, visit with them on how to do it differently.
So does that mean that different buildings may give a different instruction?
Depending, you know, situations with kids are so dynamic, you know, so it could be a little different, depending on the kid, their specific history, trauma they've experienced, sometimes even language skills makes a difference on how we process with kids.
Thank you.
Board Member Marshall?
Thank you, I have two questions, Dr. Carlson. When did Mr. Lindquist make the district aware that the, the Student A heard Mr. Oswald say the N-word?
I don't know that that happened, that was asked here, I know that as soon as they learned of the situat, my understanding from building administration is as soon as they learned of the situation, which was through a phone call over the weekend, on Monday, May 10th, they immediately notified administration, began investigating and processing that situation.
Okay, my second question, in Exhibit 4, you said that pages ending in 3 and 4 were exact your, your findings from your investigation?
Exhibit 4.
Exhibit. Exhibit 4?
Yes.
And the pages that end in 3 and 4, those were parts of your investigation, is that correct?
Correct, those are my investigation notes with Mr. Oswald on Pages Batesstamped 3, 4, and, 3, 4, 5, and, yeah, 3, 4, and 5. They're all one document.
My question to those pages, you mentioned twice in here about the attempt to be discreet when processing Student A, and then in another part where you were giving scenarios where other words would have been used, and my question is, is that policy to be discreet, or is that at each educator's discretion to, when to use that judgment?
Yeah, I don't know that it specifically says discreet, again, that goes into, we want to be appropriate when working with students and working through discipline situations with students, our folks and our teachers, and people know it's best to be discreet, there's not, there's no point in embarrassing a child in front of other students. There's not a specific directive saying be discreet when, that's just professionally how, how our, our staff works with students.
Okay, one more question. In the history of the district, has there been an investigation of a staff member using the N-word?
This is the first one I've been a part of, I did look into a situation that came up in social media that I did not investigate, but that, there was a report on social media of a staff member using the N-word, and that was looked into and investigated.
Thank you.
Board Member Sparks?
I have two questions, the first question is the diversity awareness training that is located on Exhibit 6. I noticed that the training, that there was 20 minutes for that training, and then it increased by 10 minutes, do we know what that additional training was?
So there's, they'll update them each year, and those minutes are approximations, and then they'll add quizzes, and, and staff are to, for most of these trainings, complete the quizzes with 80% or better accuracy to show that they have comprehension of the content. I can't speak specifically to what the 10 minutes difference was.
Second question is, even though the district has policies, do we still follow state and federal laws?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Board Member Campbell?
Dr. Carlson, looking at policy A.C. and the grievance, looking at policy A.C. and the grievance process, would the normal process be to begin that building investigation with the building administration, and then for you to, to take that and, and begin your investigation? Or what's the normal process that would be followed for this?
Yeah, and, and I don't know that in schools there's ever just a normal, everything's dynamic and, and things happen, but what's normal is anytime we hear of, and, and our administrators are trained, and once they hear of issues, they're reported to the compliance officer, and then the compliance officer just decides who should complete the investigation. That can be a building administrator, it can be a supervisor, and then at times, it's me.
So in this case, the billing administration started the investigation, and then you continued it, is that the process?
That's a fair statement, on May 10th, they began an investigation and notified district administration of a concern that had been reported, and that concern also came to district administration. So there was, the reporting requirement occurred there, they began the investigation, and then I came in to further investigate and look at their work to make sure it was accurate.
Board Member Allen?
Thank you, President Murdock, and kind of following up to Dr. Hedrick's question, Dr. Carlson, in, I guess really in Exhibit or Section 4, these pages, to me, sort of bleed together, so will you do me the favor of walking through this a little bit with me, starting with LSR 70003? And from what I'm gleaning from just reading this is, explain the purpose of the interview, define role as investigator, explain process. So are the, are the bullet points your summarized notes as the investigation or research, and then, and then we move on, then each page thereafter, 4, 5, 6 is, is sort of that same format, and then 7 changes a little bit. So explain to me what Page 7, how that varies from 3 to 6, I guess.
So on Page 0003, this is the, the format I use for investigation, so you see, I, I explain with the person I'm meeting with the purpose, I talk about board policy A.C., I provide them a copy of that policy, as I did with, with Mr. Oswald. I define my role as an investigator, I'm an impartial investigator seeking facts as to what happened, and then I explain the, the process and share confidentiality retaliation. Then you see that next line there where it says, "Please describe what happened," that's a prompt that I have typed, so before I meet with the person, it is just the prompts, the bullets are then what the person stated during the investigation.
Okay.
So each bullet is me representing my conversation with, in this ma, situation, Mr. Oswald. So then the next page, you see 0004, where green slip, again, that's a prompt that I used to get a better understanding of the facts of the situation, and then the bullets are his responses.
And though, and I'm sorry to interrupt, are those generally verbatim, I mean, obviously, they're not quotes, but it's generally what you're inferring from what he's saying, he or she or whomever, you're asking who's, what they're saying?
They are not quotes or verbatim, you're correct, they're representations of what was said, and then to ensure accuracy at the end of the interview, that my practice is, in this situation, all situations is to go over my notes, which I did with Mr. Oswald, to ensure accuracy of what he stated, so I could give him due process to what occurred in this situation.
Okay, and then, and that's, is that where we get, okay, that's where 6, to me, changes just a little bit, because there's no prompt, but this is, what, an interview with the parent?
So this is a, so Page 6 is a phone conversation with parent, Mr. H., and it's my notes of, of him when I was speaking to him. My purpose of that is I wanted to be able to speak with student, with his son.
Sure, sure.
To get the facts of what had happened.
And, and then 7 is with the building, folks in the building, same thing, interviews?
Yeah, and I can't speak to their methodology, I, I have a specific approach to how I do it, this is their notes and representing their investigation and their interviews with, with staff and students related to this situation.
Okay.
A little different format,
Okay, well, that helps.
But the same, same intent is to get the spirit of what is being said.
Okay, and then we get back into Page 9, and then 10 is what throws me a little bit, because now I see bullets again. Is this, are these your bullets notes, or are these, again, kind of the summary of the building, the interbuilding or in-building investigation?
Yeah, those notes would be from the buil, I did not, these are not my bulleted notes, this is a continuation of the building administration.
All right, helpful, that helps me put this all into context, thank you.
Anything else, Board Member Allen? Okay, Board Member Campbell?
I just have one more quick question, so when you wrote your executive summary, you take all of this information into account, is that true?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from board members? Dr. Carlson, thank you very much, we appreciate it. One moment, do any of the, do either Ms. Basie or Mr. McDorman have questions of Mr. Carl, Carlson, Dr. Carlson, rather, based on any of the board member questions? Ms. Basie first.
I don't have any questions.
I don't either.
Thank you, do you anticipate potential for Dr. Carlson to be recalled?
I would like to reserve that option.
All right, Dr. Carlson, since the witness exclusion rule's been invoked, you're excused for now, but would ask that you not remain in the room during the hearing or watch the live stream of it.
Mr. Hatley?
Yes, sir.
Needs to be admonished not to discuss his testimony with anyone else's.
Fair point, yes, also, don't discuss your testimony with other witnesses who've not yet been called.
I understand.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Carlson. Ms. Basie, you can call your next witness, please.
I'd like to call Mr. Brian Lindquist, please.
Good evening, Mr. Lindquist, we're going to swear you in at this time. Did you raise your hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you will give in this matter is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. Ms. Basie?
Thank you, could you please state your name for the record again?
Brian Lindquist.
Thank you, Mr. Lindquist, and what is your position with the district?
I'm an assistant principal of Pleasantly Middle School.
How long have you been in that position?
Two years.
And prior to being assistant principal at Pleasantly Middle School, what was your position?
Head principal at Kingsville R1.
And before that?
Math teacher at Pleasantly Middle School.
Thank you. What are some of your main job duties as assistant principal at Pleasantly Middle School?
I work with activities, athletics, some professional development in partnership with the administrative team. I handle supervision schedules, student discipline, building usage, calendar, many additional pieces as well.
Is one of your functions as a building administrator to ensure the safety and well-being of district students?
Yes.
Especially those in your building?
Yes.
When you, when did you first become aware of a concern involving Mr. Oswald?
Thursday, May 6th, at 2:12.
And how did you become aware?
I was sent an email by Student A.H.
Could you please turn to Exhibit 5 in your binder?
I'm there.
Do you recognize this document?
Yes, I do.
What is it?
It is the email sent to me by Student A.H. on Thursday, May 6th.
And does this appear to be a true and accurate copy of that email?
Yes.
I'd like to ask for Exhibit 5 to be admitted into evidence.
Any objection?
No objection.
Without objection, Exhibit 5 is admitted.
So I believe you testified that you, you received this that afternoon that she sent it, is that correct?
Correct.
At that point, were you aware that Mr. Oswald had written a referral for A?
No, not, not at that point.
Did you know what A was referring to by referring to an escort?
Yes, I did.
And what was that?
She was being escorted to the buses at the end of the day, so she was requesting a different person.
Mr. Oswald was, was supposed to be escorting her to the bus at the end of the day, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. What did you do when you received this email?
I went up to Student A.H.'s advisory class, pulled her with her backpack from there, and walked her to the buses and spoke to her about the situation as we walked.
And what did A tell you?
She told me that Mr. Oswald had said the N-word to her, and I said, "Tell me about that," and she told me that in reading a green slip back to her, he read it, the N-word was said, that she was surprised because a white person can't say that word, and that he then repeated the phrase again.
And what was your response to A?
I said, "I will work on that for you, tell me about what happened at lunch."
And did she then tell you about the underlying incident that had occurred at lunch?
Correct.
Were you concerned by A's report?
Yes.
What did you do with that information?
I took that information and on Friday morning began investigating that.
Did you tell Dr. Sharp about that? Did you tell Dr. Sharp about that? Report from A?
I told Dr. Sharp Monday morning, when he arrived at work.
Was he in the building on Friday?
No, he was not.
So when you say you began an investigation Friday morning, what happened? What did you do?
That investigation Friday morning focused on the three lunch tables up in the mezzanine area where students were not getting along. So I was going through statements and paring out who should have been sitting there, who wasn't in the right lunchroom, who said what, and going through that piece.
Did you do anything else with respect to the report from A that Mr., she didn't want Mr. Oswald to escort her?
Yes, I had somebody different escort her on Friday as a remediation piece.
Okay. So Dr. Sharp was out on Friday. He came back on Monday? And you said you reported?
Correct.
What did you report to Dr. Sharp on Monday morning?
I reported that a staff member said the N-word, and we will need to look into it after interviews.
And when you say interviews, what was happening that day?
We were interviewing for, I believe it was an ELA position.
Were you, did you speak with student A additionally about this incident?
On Friday, I let her know that I was looking into it, but I was focused on the piece of her getting along with peers throughout the day and being successful. So that was the piece we were working through first. The remediation piece had already been taken care of in terms of isolating student AH and Mr. Oswald.
Were you aware of Mr. H's email from May 10th?
I was not aware of that on Friday.
When did you become aware of that?
When Dr. Sharp shared it with me in between the second and third interview on Monday morning.
So at that point, did you think there were maybe two incidents?
Yes. At that point, I was trying to figure out when that would have happened.
And how did you investigate that?
I went upstairs immediately at the conclusion of interviews and pulled camera footage for the day, for that Friday, followed student JH on camera to see when that student would have crossed paths with Mr. Oswald.
And what did you see on the camera?
I saw student JH go into student administration a short while after student AH was escorted into student administration by Mr. Oswald. And then, while student JH was still in there, student AH was escorted out of student administration and taken to class.
So at that point, did you determine that it, there was one incident at issue here?
Yes. That camera footage, combined with the statement from Mr. H's email, matched the statement on the green slip. So then it was determined that they were, in fact, one incident being referred to.
Were you present when Dr. Sharp spoke with A about this incident?
Yes.
And what did Dr. Sharp, what did A report to Dr. Sharp?
She reported a very similar story to what she had reported to me on that Thursday. The only difference was, on the Thursday, she did not say that she asked Mr. Oswald to repeat it. On the report on Monday, she stated, "Taken back, repeat that," that she had asked him to repeat the statement.
Were you present when Dr. Sharp spoke with Mr. Oswald regarding this incident?
Yes.
And what do you recall Mr. Oswald reporting?
His story was similar to student AH's story.
After hearing the information from A and Mr. Oswald, and reviewing the camera footage and reading the email regarding, from Mr. H, what was your understanding of what happened on May 6th?
My understanding was that the story provided by student AH and the story provided by Mr. Oswald were the story. That was, in fact, the correct story.
And that was that Mr.?
That Mr. Oswald had repeated a green slip twice to a student, and the N-word was used two times.
Did you refer the, did you review the referral that was written for student A?
Yes.
Are teachers provided instruction on how to fill out referrals?
New teachers are provided directions of how to access the referrals.
After a teacher fills out a referral, what is the process?
After a student fills out, or after a teacher, sorry, fills out a referral, Mrs. McDonough, the secretary in student administration, prints it off, attaches it to a folder with the student's name on it, that also contains any prior discipline referrals, puts it in a box outside of our door. There's three tiers to it. Sets it in there, and then we go through those referrals after they're printed out there.
And is that the same process for the green slip, even though that's not electronic?
Yeah, so those would be attached with a paper clip to the actual folder that gets put in there. So either way, it's either a piece of paper folded in half, paper clipped to the folder, or it is a green slip, paper clipped to the folder.
Is it the expectation that teachers are supposed to speak with students to confirm with them what they said or what they did prior to the teacher submitting a referral?
That is not an expectation.
Is that the job of the administrator?
Yes.
What does an administrator do upon receiving a referral?
They take that referral, sit down with the student, go over what's going on, and try to find a root cause there, and work through the discipline and interventions that could apply for that situation.
And if the student denies the conduct in the referral, what happens next?
I would collaborate with a staff member and work through, did you, if it's not listed on the referral, did you hear it or did you see it? If it's listed on the referral, depending on the severity of what is stated, I would double-check, but if it is not stated, "I saw this," or "I heard this," I will check with a staff member to ensure that they did hear that or see that.
And is there other types of investigation you can do to ensure, to make a determination as to what happened if the staff member says one thing and a student says another thing?
Could you please repeat that question? Sorry.
Do you, at times, have to conduct an investigation? Because a staff member says one thing happened, a student denies it, maybe you have to interview witnesses, or?
Oh, yes, yes. If a student denies something and a staff member has seen it or heard it, and there needs to be an investigation, depending on the severity, I collect statements from any witnesses that were present and go through that.
When you have a situation that a racial slur is written in a referral, how do you handle that when speaking to a student?
It depends on the student and what we're going through. It can be anything from handing it to them and asking them to read it. A lot of times, especially when I'm speaking with parents, as I call them with those referrals, I will say N-word to reference that racial slur specifically. And depending on what the slur is, I would shorten it to usually the first letter and say word.
Have you ever repeated the N-word to a student?
No.
Do you believe that the N-word is a racial slur?
Yes.
Are you aware of the N-word being spoken by teachers in the presence of students in any other context at Pleasantly Middle School?
No.
Do you believe that Mr. Oswald's use of the N-word in this context was wrong?
Yes.
Why?
It's a racial slur. You can't say it. It's, I mean, we're working with students, four students, and we're trying to build them up. We can't use those words.
Is it your understanding that that's a violation of board policy?
Yes.
Do you know which board policy, generally?
I do not know off the top of my head. I would say it's under personnel. I could look it up.
I have no further questions.
Thank you, Ms. Basie. Mr. McDorman?
Do you recall me taking your deposition on June 15th?
Yes.
Have you read that document?
No.
Can you hand him his deposition? All right, I want you to turn, if you would, to page 25.
Mr. McDorman, just.
Let's start at line 23.
Excuse me, Mr. McDorman. Not a problem with you. I'm just explaining to board members, the deposition transcript's not in your binder, but Mr. McDorman's entitled to read parts of the deposition to a witness if he believes that something in the deposition is inconsistent with what the witness has testified here to tonight. So I assume that's what Mr. McDorman's getting ready to do, but you don't have that transcript, so you'll just need to listen to the question and answer for purposes of rendering a decision.
Are you with me on page 25?
Yes, sir.
All right. And we'll start with line 23. And let me read that, because I'll read the questions, because I was questioning. You can read the response, all right?
All right.
All right. So, and if I do it incorrectly, tell me that, all right?
Okay.
Thank you. So line 23, all right. Have you ever had an instance in the time that you've been an assistant principal where a student has denied what's put on the discipline report? And we're over on page 26 now. And that concludes with line one. Your answer's on line two. Can you read that?
Yes, is what I stated.
And on line three, my question is claiming it's inaccurate. And on line four, your answer was?
Yes.
And on line five, or they didn't do it, is that right? And your answer on line six?
Yes.
And then on line seven, so, do you find any fault with Mr. Oswald confirming with student A? Is this what you said? And what's your answer on line 10?
No.
So was your answer truthful that day?
Yes.
So on June 15th, when I asked you about him repeating the word out loud, and asked if you found any fault with that, your answer was no?
Objection. That is not what the testimony said. It does not say repeating the word out loud. It says confirming the accuracy.
Well, you knew at that point in time.
Hold on, hold on. Are you going to withdraw that question and ask another one? Because if you are, I don't need to rule in her objection.
Or what?
If you are, I don't need to rule in her objection.
No, I'll rephrase.
Thank you.
You knew on May 6th, when you escorted her on the bus, that Mr. Oswald had said the N-word out loud. She told you that.
Correct.
So when your deposition was taken on June 15th, you knew how he had confirmed the accuracy of her statement by saying it to her out loud, right?
The question states, "Did you find any fault with Mr. Oswald confirming with student A what was said?" I found no fault in confirming. I found fault in the N-word.
Did you, now you said that you, so you're saying I'm misconstruing your response, is that right?
Correct.
Now, I thought you said, when you walked her to the bus on May 6th, she said that he had said the N-word twice that day.
Correct.
But didn't you tell me at your deposition that she didn't indicate it had been said twice until you interviewed her on May 10th?
Incorrect.
All right. So if I thought you said that, I'm mistaken.
Correct.
All right. When did the policy start, if you know, that staff was instructed not to say the N-word out loud?
I do not know what you're asking.
Well, are you telling the board and me that the staff has been instructed not to say the N-word out loud?
Objection. I think that assumes facts that are not in evidence.
Could you repeat the question, please? What was the question?
Mr. Lindquist, as part of your training of new staff, let me go at it that way. What direction do you give new staff as to the use of the N-word?
We do not give them direction specifically on the use of the N-word.
Are you aware of anything in writing that's provided to the staff to tell them what the administration considers racial slurs?
I do not know of anything in writing that lists all racial slurs.
When you use the term "N-word," is that in place of one single word that's a racial slur, or multiple words?
It would be multiple.
How many?
Well, after you enlightened me to another N-word that I don't agree with as well, I would say three now.
So there's three different things that N-word could stand for?
Correct.
Are there other words that are supposed to be used by initials only that the staff has been instructed on?
The staff is not instructed on a curse word list.
Why not?
I don't know of a list in board policy of specific curse words.
So are you saying there is no board policy on the use of the N-word in place of a racial slur?
Objection. Misconstrues his testimony. That's not what he said.
I think I'll overrule that, if you can answer the question.
Could you please repeat the question after that piece?
Madam reporter, can you read it back?
I do not know of a policy that lists out all racial slurs.
All right, there's no policy on that. Is there any type of written documentation, and we'll say we'll give to new staff, if you've been there two years, that instructs them not to repeat racial slurs in filling out a green slip with the student?
I do not give a document to new teachers that states, "Do not state racial slurs."
Why not?
I don't do the new teacher training.
That's a good point. Okay. Do you do any teacher training?
I work with Misha. The trainings are provided through the state of Missouri for athletics and some activities. And I don't administer them, but I check to make sure they're completed.
But who provides training to the new teachers on student discipline?
Mrs. Alonso.
Have you ever sat in on her training?
I do not.
Are you aware of any documents she uses in training new teachers?
I am not.
So when you met with student A with respect to the green slip, how did you address the quotation that was in that document?
I abbreviated the word.
So you said it, but abbreviated it?
Correct. I said "N-word" instead of the word.
And did you repeat the rest of it?
Yes.
Were you showing her the green slip at the time?
No, I was not.
Did she tell you what the N-word was?
No, she understood what she said, so she did not say the word again.
How do you know she understood it?
She said, yes, I said that.
And you did discipline her as a result of that?
Correct.
And that was in-school suspension?
Correct.
How long have you known Mr. Oswald?
Professionally, since I started teaching at Pleasantly Middle School in 2011.
In that timeframe, have you ever become aware of him ever using a racial slur towards any student?
No, I have not.
Did you know him prior to your professional relationship?
Yes.
And how did you know him then?
I was a student in his class.
When was that?
Ninety-nine to 2000, maybe. I had him in eighth grade, I believe, and Bert Walker in seventh grade, but they team taught, so I had him kind of both years.
Did you ever hear him utter a racial slur when you were a student of his or a student when in his building?
I have not heard him say a racial slur.
Was there any other type of activity that he might have been involved in coaching that you had been a participant in?
No.
You sat in on the interview of Mr. Oswald, did you not?
Yes, I did.
Does, is the context in which someone says a racial slur important to you?
No.
Did you understand that Mr. Oswald emphatically stated to you that he did not say these words? He was simply repeating what the student had said?
Yes, he stated, I didn't say that, I was saying what she said.
And that didn't make any difference to you?
That's semantics.
That's context, isn't it?
It is context, correct, I agree.
But it's no different to you?
You said a word, you said a word.
Have you instructed the staff not to conference with students?
No.
As we sit here today, can you think of any document you've seen, and that could be electronic as well, that directs the staff of this district not to repeat a racial slur under any circumstance?
It could be in a board policy, but I don't know of a specific one that says do not repeat the N-word.
So, no type of training that you're aware of that's provided to the staff with respect to the administration's position on saying the N-word?
I would say between safe schools, which includes like the discrimination piece, possibly a trauma-informed care.
Have you participated in the safe school training?
Yes, I have, every year.
Well, his record's been provided here, but I haven't seen one document, and I've requested it, that relates to this training, whether it's safe schools training, that uses the term racial slur, defines a term racial slur, or gives examples of racial slur. Have you seen documents that gives any of the, provide staff any of that type of instruction in the safe schools training?
I would say that's under discrimination and using appropriate verbiage with students and not making them feel uncomfortable.
Are you aware of anything within the training that directs the staff how to address students' use of racial slurs?
No.
No other questions?
Can you redirect Ms. Basie?
I don't have any questions.
Board questions?
Okay, board members, if you have any questions for Mr. Lindquist.
Board member Hedrick?
Could I refer you to exhibit four, I believe? Make sure I'm on the right one here. Exhibit four. Beginning on page seven of that, LSR 70007, are any of the notes on page seven, eight, nine, or 10 notes that you provided?
I did not provide any of those, and I did not write in this. The only piece, I guess, if we use provided, would be LSR 7009, the first line down where it's the first line after the end of the paragraph there where it says Brian Lindquist.
Yes.
Jay was in the stead from 1118 to 1151. That was per the camera footage I pulled.
Okay, thank you. Just one other question. In terms of the time that Student A was brought to the student administration office, that would have been somewhere between 1118 and 1151. Is that an accurate statement?
That is correct.
So, and the green slip was prepared at that time, and then she went on to class. And so, and you, she didn't communicate with you, and you didn't see her at that point in time, correct?
Correct.
And you first heard from her at 2:12 PM that same day?
Correct.
So, is that a typical process when a green slip is written that the student kind of goes on and then it's addressed at a later time? Is that a typical process in your building, or?
Yeah, they can. A lot, green slips can be written right at the time of the incident, and maybe it was, they said something inappropriate in class, or as long as it's not endangering student safety and it's something where they can still be in the learning environment and actively engaged and be safe in what they're doing, they can go back to class, correct?
So, would you be depending on the person who wrote the green slip or entered it in electronically, I guess, to kind of alert anyone if they felt like the student was in danger?
Yeah, so normally if it's an endanger piece and somebody's doing a green slip and it was electronic, say it was in the classroom, they would generally send an email and copy a couple people in the front office and say, I need an administrator, or they could use the call button if it was an incident that had already gotten to the point where an administrator could be called over the intercom.
Okay, and then just one last question. You indicated you began your investigation on May 7th. So, any of the notes from those investigations was not relevant to this? Would that be an accurate statement?
Correct, that was between the female students at the three different lunch tables.
Thank you.
Board member Fritchy?
Thank you. I'm referring to SS in the binder, and it's the Pleasantly Middle School handbook. And I'm just referring back to a question that was asked of you earlier regarding the discipline for the student, and I just wanted to get clarification on this. On page 27, the discipline guide, it says profane language and appropriate gestures written or verbal. Step one up to one day of ISS, step two ISS up to three days. So, is that standard procedure for, you said you assigned one day of ISS?
Yes, correct.
So, that must, that's a first incident?
Yes.
Okay, so the maximum a student can get for saying like a racial slur or something would be if it were a second incident, would be up to three days, and they can just get a maximum of three days ISS, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions from board members? Okay, seeing none, Ms. Basie. Do you have any further questions or Mr. McDorman, based on the questions from a board member?
I have no further questions.
I do.
Okay.
With respect to exhibit SS?
Yes.
And looking at page 27, which is the discipline guide?
Correct.
Is the term racial slur anywhere within the discipline guide?
No.
So, what category do you put it under, then?
Profane language.
So, that's profanities, is that right?
Yes, profane language and inappropriate gestures.
So, does the same thing apply to staff if this had been profanity used, was, again, is that not to be repeated?
If there were instances with profanity with staff, I would consult with Dr. Sharp, who would then guide me through either HR or inappropriate action.
Okay, that's your opportunity to go with Dr. Sharp, but I'm asking, what training does the staff get if it deals, if it's the use of profanity?
What training to the use of profanity?
Yes. How does a teacher handle that? Do they say it or not?
You don't use profanity with students.
So, if this instance, the student had used "F you," is that profanity?
"F you" would be profanity, yes, profane language.
But if she had said the full words, is the staff member supposed to write it out?
So, are you, sorry, I'll need a repeat there, I guess, on the prior question. So, if a student says "F you," but they only say "F you," not the word?
No, they say the word.
Okay, so they say the word, then can you please ask that follow-up question?
Are you asking me to?
Yes, I don't, or.
What I'm trying to find out is, is profanity treated any differently in the green slip as to what the teacher in this instance is supposed to do? If this had been an instance where the student stood up in the mezzanine and said, "F you," but I'm talking about the words, what should the staff member have done in that instance?
Written it down and put it in a referral, and if it was a confrontational issue, brought them down to student administration.
But can they repeat it to assure accuracy?
No, they shouldn't say profanity.
So, is that the policy as well? You don't say it out loud either?
You don't say profanity.
Under any circumstance?
Correct.
And I don't suppose there's anything in writing, to the staff, about that either, is there?
It's probably in board policy, I'd have to consult with HR.
Thank you, I have no other questions.
I have no further questions.
Go ahead. Board member Marshall?
No, she's good, she withdrew the question. So, Mr. Lindquist, I think that you can go through your thing on.
Do you anticipate the need to recall Mr. Lindquist?
I do not.
Mr. McDorman, do you anticipate calling him?
No, we're fine with him being released.
Mr. Lindquist, you're released. You can stay here and watch, or you can go home and watch TV, or go home and watch this on TV.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lindquist. At this time, Ms. Basie, we will take our second break here, since we're right at about 1:25 since the last one. We will be, we will start back again here at 8:05, 8:05, please. Just let us know if we need any other break, okay?
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, we are going to get started again here. Ms. Basie, you can call your next witness, please.
Sorry, I'd like to call Dr. David Sharp, please.
Dr. Sharp, we are going to swear you in at this time. If you could raise your hand, please, sir. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you will give in this matter is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Basie?
Thank you. Dr. Sharp, can you please state your name for the record?
David Sharp.
And what is your position with the district?
Principal of Pleasantly Middle School.
How long have you held this position?
Two years.
And prior to that position, what was your role?
I served in administration in the R7 School District as a principal, at least I'm a West, director of Summit Technology Academy, assistant superintendent, and assistant principal, at least I'm a West.
Lots of experience?
Yes, ma'am.
What are some of your main job duties as principal?
Principal's main job duties are to ensure student and staff safety, budget, financing, professional development, instruction, leadership.
When did you first become aware of a concern involving Mr. Oswald?
On May 10th, 2021.
And how did you become aware?
On May 10th, Assistant Principal Brian Lindquist approached me in the morning and said that there was a potential situation involving Mr. Oswald repeating the N-word back to a student.
And what did you do upon getting that information from Mr. Oswald?
From Mr. Lindquist?
Yes, from Mr. Lindquist, thank you.
Well, from there, that morning, I was headed in, that was at about 6:45, 6:50. I was headed in to interview teachers that were coming at about 7:45, that were new teachers that were coming for a job. And as soon as I took that information under advisement, because the morning was busy, moved that to the office where my secretary had handed me a note from a parent. And from there, it was a phone call to a parent. Can I, can I open to?
I was just going to say, if you can refer to exhibit four in that binder, and specifically then, I believe, LSR 70007, page seven at the bottom. Are those your notes of the investigation?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so you were saying that your assistant gave you a message?
Yes, so that morning, once I came in from visiting with Mr. Lindquist, my administrative assistant gave me a note from a parent, which I'll call HB, that she had phoned the school on Saturday, 5/8, left a message on my assistant's phone, and the message from my assistant was concerning words from Mr. Oswald. She forwarded me the voicemail, which I did listen to, and that voicemail, she had stated that there was a teacher that she named that was PE and named Mr. Oswald as using racial slurs and would like for me to call her back.
Did you call her back?
Yes, ma'am, right promptly at 7:30.
And what did she say?
She had asked me if I would call her back later in the day.
Okay. Did you speak with her student?
Yes, ma'am. Student at that time, so I was trying to move between that and getting candidates prepped for interview and try to give this its diligence it needed at the morning. I interviewed her student at about 7:40, and I'll say DA, and I just asked him what had happened, and then from there, he had just said that they were in the car on their way to basketball, and JH had reported that a teacher had called him the N-word.
Okay. What did you do after that?
Okay, so from there, it was time to conduct the interviews for the teachers. So, I had to convene a team that was working downstairs, so we went ahead on with our interviews, because I had candidates from out of town, and I couldn't change or couldn't pause. So, we went ahead and moved on with the interviews, and they were set to adjourn somewhere around the noon or 1 o'clock hour. And once those were adjourned, then I would reconvene the investigation.
Did you receive an email from Mr. H?
Yes, ma'am. In the meantime, during a break of. Yes, ma'am. In, in the meantime, during a break of my interviews, during the break, I was checking my email, and about nine thirty-six AM, I received an email from Mr. H.
If you turn to page LSR seven zero zero one-one of that same exhibit, is that a copy of the email that you received?
Yes, ma'am.
What did you, what did you do upon receiving this email? Were, were you concerned that you had multiple incidents?
Yes, ma'am. After, after reading this multiple times, I became concerned with what I had learned early that morning and this year, and I was fearful of having two incidents.
So what did you do next to investigate the situation?
Concluded the interviews. And then, and, and, well, the next, I, I emailed Mr. H back, because he had asked for a meeting that day, which I promptly said yes, at one o'clock, so I emailed him back, continued on with interviews. As another interview ended, went back to check my email, he had responded. And once he had responded, he had said that he couldn't meet today. On the tenth, he could meet me on the eleventh, and we agreed upon a time on the eleventh.
Okay. Did you speak to Mr. Oswald on the tenth?
Yes, ma'am.
What did Mr. Oswald report to you? And you're referring back to your notes here, going back to page LSR seven zero 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 seven, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Before you, before you answer that question, I'm gonna ask you another question, we'll go back to that question. With these notes, how do you take these notes?
I type as people talk, so I apologize for the grammatical and the run-on errors that are in there.
No need to apologize. Okay, so what did Mr. Oswald tell you?
So upon visiting with Mr. Oswald, he had stated to me that he was writing student A up for a situation that happened in the mezzanine during lunch with her shouting across the lunchroom to a group of students. Mr. Oswald reported that he had walked her to stad, they had a conversation on the way to stad about her using that kind of language. Once they got into stad, he had stated that he verbalized, "This is what I have you saying." And that he had stated that he had repeated what was on the green slip and asked her to confirm. And so as I was typing, he said, "You let me know anything that I have here that is incorrect, or this is not what happened." I read exactly what I heard her say and wrote it on the green slip. I wrote it down for what is exactly on the green slip, and I repeated it back to her. I read back exactly what was on that. I wanted to make sure it was right before she went into Mr. Lindquist's office, so there was not a misunderstanding. And then at the time, he had stated, I had asked him a question about the other student that potentially was in there, and he had, that was in the email. And he had stated that he did not address the other kid, the other student that was in there. And he said he may have asked what that student was working on at that time.
And at that point, had you established, is, is this student JH, the other student in the, in the office?
Yes, ma'am.
And at that point, had you established that JH and A had been in the office at the same time?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Did Mr. Oswald tell you anything else?
He said he may have asked what, what the student was working on, he had stated that student A was laughing and looked over at that student, he was trying to focus on the green slip, and he had to go back to lunch supervision. He had stated, again, "I'm gonna read exactly what you have read here." Student A is upset, a few girls in lunch, and I quoted it back to her.
Okay. Did you believe Mr. Oswald?
Yes, ma'am.
Did you also speak to student A?
Yes, ma'am.
And what did student A report to you?
When, when student A came to visit in the office, she had stated that Coach Oswald had brought her down, and that Ms. McDonough had asked for a paper. He repeated what I had said to the other girl, he was reading what he wrote down. And then she had stated, "Hold on, I'm in shock because he's white, and that's an offensive word." I thought he would have said the N-word or something, that's why I asked him to repeat what he said. I was in shock because I was laughing. And then he had stated that JH heard it too, and basically that was it. And she said he just read it back to me. And then I asked her a question about the clarity piece, and she said she didn't remember him saying he was reading it back for accuracy for Mr. Lindquist. And she said Jordan was sitting in stad as well, and she was in the, the little chair, and he was in the study carol to the right.
Okay. Did you believe A?
Yes, ma'am.
Did you speak with Mr. H?
Yes, ma'am.
What did Mr. H tell you?
Okay, on the eleventh, we had met with Mr. H again, and I typed again as he had spoke, as he had came in and met with us at two o'clock on that day. Went through the situation that we had had at that point in time. And he had said at that point that his son and another student were in the office, and that he had heard the others, other students say, "Could you repeat that?" And that his son JH turned around and looked at him, and that Mr. Oswald repeated looking at him. Mr. JH stated that his son knows that what it was, and that's how his son took it. And he not only said it once, but he said he said it twice.
So you did explain to Mr. H that the facts, as, as you understood them from Mr. Oswald and A, were maybe different than what he had, he had put in his email?
Yes, ma'am.
So after your investigation, the conversations with Mr. Oswald and A, and with Mr. H, what was your understanding of what occurred in the office on May sixth?
There was a situation that happened in the, in the mezzanine, where I had a staff member that was staffed, that was on duty, and that Mr. Oswald was, was moving through that area. And that I had a student that had gotten emotional and upset at a group of girls or other students at another table, and that had yelled that across the cafeteria, our second cafeteria to them, because the mezzanine is our second piece because of COVID, that had read, had, had said that across. And then in the exchange between my staff member, Mr. Guilfoyle, and Mr. Oswald, he would bring her down to the office. He brought her to the office, and when he got in the office, he repeated the green slip to her as he was writing it down.
And am I correct that, that A reported to you that she was in shock that he said that word?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm gonna have you look at that same exhibit, exhibit LSR seven dash zero 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 eight. Is that a picture of the green slip?
Yes, ma'am.
Are teachers expected to speak with students to confirm with them what they have said prior to submitting a referral? Is that a requirement?
No.
When the administration gets a referral, what happens?
Well, when student administration gets a referral, because usually it's a, when a staff member observes a, a policy or a rule violation, when they observe that, they put it down, then our, our staff either gets it electronically, or sometimes handwritten. Most of the time, they're electronic, and sometimes they're a day or two apart from the incident. And when they get it, it is up to the administration to investigate what was on the referral.
Okay. When you have a situation that a racial slur is, is referenced in a referral, how do you handle that?
Well, throughout, throughout my time, when that happens, usually students are pretty emotional when that happens, so a lot of times when they'll come in, you have to, you try to build a relationship with them to separate emotions from facts. And a lot of times, I'll tell them that I'm not here because of you, I'm here for you. And what I'll do from there is, is if I know the student, and we'll try to calm the situation down the best that we can, and I'll say, "This is pretty sensitive." So usually what I'll do, I'll either turn the paper to them, or I'll turn my computer screen and show them what was said, and I'll just ask them.
Have you ever repeated the N-word in that context?
No, ma'am.
Are you aware of training that staff at Pleasantly Middle School has received regarding racial awareness?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you tell us about that training?
In the last year, I, I'll just, I'll just reference this year, in two thousand and twenty. At the beginning, I'll go back to August. I know our district, we had a, a, a district equity conversation through Lively Paradox with Nicole Price. We have our presentations that we have at the beginning of the year through administration, and I presented on panorama data. And then the panorama da, data that we'd had, we'd go with SEL, social, emotional, and equity, so I presented that data. This year, a focus of our professional development plans for all teachers was to be avid, and COVID shut us down on avid, so I didn't get a chance to get all of my staff to avid. But avid culturally relevant teaching was to be a part of every teacher's PDP plan. So I wanted them to do two strategies per semester to work through. And then I had also had I Am Noticed come in two different times this year and present to my faculty on social, emotional pieces. And then also, in the spring, we did some work with Sarah Taylor around Zaretta Hammond's work and cultural responsive teaching in the brain.
Do you know if any of those trainings specifically included a directive to staff not to say the N-word in the presence of students?
No, ma'am, but one might deduct that you not do that.
Do you believe that training was sufficient to make staff aware of what that word could mean, and to not say it in the presence of students?
Yes.
Have you ever offered resources to staff related how to approach sensitive issues related to race?
Yes, ma'am. Given the, the, the national events of last spring and early summer relative to George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, and Ahmaud Arbery, I'd sent a memo to my staff in June relative to some things that I think that we needed to lean into and step towards the complexity as a staff, as we heard as a nation. And I offered up multiple resources and opportunities for the staff that I'd say, whether you go to a podcast, you want a resource, a material, a book, or anything that we could do. I didn't want to talk about what we had done, I wanted to talk about what we were gonna do. And so I offered all of that to my staff to pick up some resources on, on my budget, anything they needed to reflect, to learn, to, to heal, and, and to grow as professionals.
Did Mr. Oswald take you up on any of those resources?
No, ma'am.
Do you consider the N-word to be a racial slur?
Yes, ma'am.
Are you aware that there may be more than one version of the N-word?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you consider all of them to be racial slurs?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you consider all of them to be appropriate, inappropriate when spoken by a teacher in the presence of students?
Yes, ma'am.
Why?
Because there are certain words that our students should not have to hear, and that word in particular is painful, it's offensive, and it's hurtful.
Do you believe that Mr. Oswald's use of the N-word in this context was wrong?
Yes, ma'am.
And can you tell us why?
Well, because I, you, you shouldn't use the N-word in front of students.
For the reasons that you just said.
The reasons that I just mentioned.
Do you believe it's a violation of board policy?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you know which policies?
I believe GB, CB, staff conduct. And then I think specifically, student and staff relationships.
I have no further questions.
Thank you, Ms. Basie. Mr. McDorman?
This memo you sent out, I'd asked, when I was up here last week, for any type of documentation. I haven't seen it, do you have it here with you?
No, sir, I don't have it right now.
What did the memo say?
It was in June of two thousand and twenty. And it was like I had just stated earlier, sir. It was with all of the national events that were going on surrounding race in our country and everything that was going on. I wanted to lean forward and have our staff come together and share in the pain with our black friends, students, family members, and colleagues, and try to learn and grow as we lean into that complexity, and offer resources to try to help that and reflect, and have critical conversations around that.
Would you agree with me that this is very important to administration? That they get the staff to understand that they're not supposed to repeat out loud a racial slur at any time?
Yes, sir.
That's important, right?
Yes, sir.
But when I ask what's been done to specifically address them of that, all I ever get is like what you've done, is you refer to board policy.
Mr. McDorman, is that a question?
It will be.
I, I, let's try to stick to questions, okay?
Can you direct me to anywhere in board policy that there's a reference to racial slurs?
I believe in GB, CB, somewhere, which is in staff conduct, there's profanity, use of profanity.
Well, let's look at GB, CB. Is that ten, nine? Turn to Exhibit nine. If you would, take a moment, two-page document, and direct me to where the term racial slur is in that document.
You also just asked about profanity.
Pardon?
You also just asked about profanity.
Well, I'll, won't do compound, I'll ask just one thing.
Thank you.
Racial slur.
Number ten, it says employees will not use, will not use profanity, and will not raise their voices unless necessary.
Well, are you telling me that racial slurs have been defined as profanity?
No, sir.
Are they the same?
They should be.
Is "F you" an example of profanity?
Yes, sir.
So, but is it a racial slur?
No, sir.
So are all racial slurs profanity?
I believe so, yes.
But not all profanity is racial slur?
Yes, sir.
You mentioned the fact that when you're going through, I guess, the student discipline, how you have, use your computer, your laptop?
Yes, sir.
And turn it to the student to look at, is that right?
At some point in times, yes.
Did you provide training to the staff on how to do that?
The only training-
Did you personally provide that?
No, sir.
Why not?
Well, my assistant principals provide training to, to new staff and new teachers. That's when we go over how to write a new referral, or how to write a referral. And go over the context and the general nature of the referral. If I don't do that, that's my job, my assistant principals do that for student administration.
And I'm sorry, I know you said this, but I don't recall. How long have you been the building principal there?
Just two years, sir.
All right. In your interview with Mr. Oswald, did he tell you that about three years ago, he started repeating back to the student- repeating back to the student on student discipline their exact words to confirm what they were saying? I'm sorry.
Yes, sir, he did.
Did you tell him not to do that?
Yes, sir.
Have you told other staff members that?
No, sir, I've never had a situation similar to this one.
All right. Well, I mean, I certainly don't question your experience, your qualifications, but you take over this building two years ago.
Yes, sir.
Do you think it's important to determine how we've been processing these things at that time?
Yes, sir. I'd had a lot of staff conversations probably prior to taking over and I had a lot of questions around what I call passion, purpose and pride and we had purposeful conversation around change and staff had a lot of conversations around discipline. And so I'd looked and read through and had conversations relative to data around discipline and wanted to improve discipline.
And you've talked about professional development, racial awareness?
Yes, sir.
Right?
Yes, sir.
But within that training, any reference saying, "Don't repeat a racial slur. Don't say it out loud."
No, sir, not specifically, no.
Why not?
Well, that's the general nature of the training that we'd have. One would deduct that you wouldn't want to do that from the training because it's highly insensitive and offensive to our students.
Well, you've referenced the events of the past year.
Yes, sir.
And wanting to ensure that staff understood things, is that right?
Yes, sir.
And obviously, when you're talking about Mr. Floyd, we're talking about a black individual being killed by a white cop, right?
Yes, sir.
So you want to discuss the sensitivity of those issues, is that correct?
Well, that plus all, and I don't have?
A lot of them, I know.
Yes, sir. All, in that memo that I'd sent to my faculty, we referenced all marginalized groups, not just African-Americans at that time. I made reference to all marginalized students that we had had, LGBTQT and other students that have issues and things that are sensitive in nature that we need to be aware of and try to do our very best to make them feel welcome at our school.
Wouldn't that been the perfect time to say, just in case there's any question, I don't want to have a staff member utter a racial slur? Wouldn't that make sense?
Yes, sir. But I'll tell you what, in 27 years of processing referrals, that's the first time I've ever had anybody do that.
How long have you known Joe Oswald?
I've known Joe two years at PL and then he was an assistant football coach for me, at least some at West for a long time.
And for you, is that when you were a principal there?
Yes, sir.
Are you aware of any other incident involving him where he's claimed to have made a racial slur?
No, sir. No, sir.
Are you familiar with his personnel file?
Somewhat, yes, sir.
Are you aware of any complaints, discipline or anything that's occurred to him in the 27 years he's been in this district?
No formal write-ups, sir, no.
And just so I understand, for the benefit of the staff that might be here, is your concern that he put the actual word in the green slip or just simply that he said the word out loud?
He said the word out loud.
So you can write it, but don't say it?
Yes, sir.
You don't think that could be offensive to a student to see the word written out as much as it being spoken?
Well, sometimes it, with some teachers, most teachers will not spell it out. Most teachers will either hyphenate it or go N-word or if it's a curse word or something like that, they may do the exact same thing.
But they also may put the exact word too?
Yes, sir.
And that's okay?
If they write it, yes, sir, it is.
Just don't say it?
Don't say it.
Is that the procedure now that your staff's supposed to use?
I'm not sure what you're asking me there.
Well, I mean, did you send a memo out after this incident telling staff in case you're not sure of what our policy is?
No, sir.
You're not, why not?
Well, this is a personnel, HR issue right now that I didn't talk to my staff about and it's highly sensitive and I have a staff member involved and therefore I can't talk about it because those conversations will spiral out of control. And so I've not had that conversation with my staff as of yet.
Is there guidelines that apply to your building as well as the high schools or the other middle schools or the grade schools or is it each building's up to whatever they want to do on their own?
The general guidelines for writing the referrals are pretty much the same across the school district. Everybody either has the green slip, which is the paper copy, but the vast majority of assistant principals get their referrals via Power School.
You put in your report about student A, that she was in shock.
Yes, sir.
Right? Did you ask her what she meant?
She had stated that she was in shock because of what Mr. Oswald had said.
But she also was laughing.
Yes, sir. Sometimes when you're dealing with 12 and 13-year-old youngsters and social emotional time in a time of high stress and anxiety for them, in my experience, sometimes laughing is a defense mechanism.
You don't know what it was here. You weren't there.
No, sir.
No other questions?
I just have a couple. Thank you. I believe you testified earlier that it was not an expectation that teachers confirm accuracy of a statement necessarily before submitting a referral, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
But you haven't said that there's anything wrong with doing that, is that correct? A teacher, when they get a referral, I mean, a teacher when they observe something happening or hear a student make a statement, you're not saying it's a violation of policy for them to ask the student what had happened, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, no, it's not.
In this situation, what you're saying is the concern is that he repeated the N-word, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And in your experience, could he have confirmed what she said without repeating the N-word?
Yes, ma'am.
There are lots of things that teachers could do that would be inappropriate that you have not specifically told them not to do, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
For example, have you specifically told teachers they can't fall asleep in the classroom?
No.
Would that be inappropriate for teachers to do?
Yes, it would.
I have no further questions.
Mr. McDorman?
I'll try to stay awake. I have two other questions.
Board members, this is your opportunity. If you have any questions for Dr. Sharp, Board Member Hedrick?
I think I just have one and it's in exhibit four on page seven.
Dr. Hedrick, is that the LSR 7000-1?
No, 0007.
Because I went by four, the number on the tab, my apologies.
Under tab four and then down to the very bottom.
Yes, ma'am, I'm there now.
So in the paragraph, that's mid-page where it says, "Ask her." It starts, "Ask her." Do you see that? That paragraph?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Within that paragraph, there's a statement that says, "She stated that Jay stated he has this recorded on his Chromebook." Did you do any investigation whether that was an accurate statement or not, that this was recorded on the student's Chromebook?
No, ma'am.
Thank you.
Board Member Marshall?
Thank you. Dr. Sharp, you said in your 20-plus years that you've never had staff say the N-word to a student. Do you believe that the reason for that is because the staff understands that the policy bars the use of racial slurs?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you believe that our district needs a policy that says that using racial slurs is prohibited?
Yes, I do.
Specific racial slurs is prohibited?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Board Member Allen?
Thank you. Dr. Sharp, and I had asked Dr. Carlson some of this earlier, so picking up, same tab four, picking up on page seven, is page seven through 10 then all of your notes? Is that what I can understand here? Everything through?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so those bulleted items at the end, feels that school district does not take care of these. Is that your summation of the conversation with, what, John H? Is that?
Yes, sir, at the end of the conversation, that's it.
So the four bullets are your?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Board Member Sparks?
Sorry. Dr. Sharp, I know that you mentioned that there were no formal write-ups in this teacher's file.
Yes, sir.
What is a formal write-up? So what would make it into a teacher's file?
Anything that would be on progressive discipline, which would be a first, second or third written warning.
So any generic complaint from a parent or a student may not necessarily make it into a teacher's file?
Sometimes there's what you call notes to file, Mr. Sparks, and there would be general notes in there and there are general notes that would be in the file, yes.
So anytime there's any complaint, that does not necessarily mean that it can make it into a file, in the teacher's file?
Not always.
Are there any further questions from board members? Either council have any further questions for Dr. Sharp?
I don't have any further questions for Dr. Sharp.
Nothing further.
Okay, sir. Joe, do you want to go through the?
Do either of you have any anticipation of recalling Dr. Sharp?
I think I need to reserve that.
All right, fair enough. Dr. Sharp, there is a possibility you may be recalled as a witness and therefore because of the witness exclusion rule, we would ask that you not discuss your testimony with anyone else and not be in the room or watch the live stream of anyone else's testimony until council release you from appearing here this evening.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sharp. Ms. Basie, you can call your next witness.
I'll, Dr. Buck.
Dr. Buck, can you raise your hand to be sworn in, please? Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you will give in this matter is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Basie?
Dr. Buck, can you please state your name for the record?
David Buck.
And what is your position with the district?
Superintendent of Schools.
How long have you been superintendent?
Been superintendent here for one year and five years prior to here.
And where were you superintendent prior to here?
Wright City R2 School District.
Have you ever been a teacher?
Yes.
How about a building administrator?
Yes.
For how long were you a building administrator?
I was a high school principal for six years.
What are some of your main job duties as superintendent?
I am the CEO of the district and I enforce board policy.
When did you first become aware that Mr. Oswald may have violated board policy?
Monday, May 10th.
And how did you become aware?
There was an email sent by a parent to me, but they misspelled my email address, so later in the day, somebody provided it to me.
And is that the email from Mr. H. that has been testified to tonight?
Correct.
What was your reaction upon becoming aware of that email?
Grave concern and it warranted further investigation. I went up to Dr. Andrews, Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Education and notified him.
Do you know what happened next?
The next day, May 11th, I followed up with Dr. Andrews and was informed that the investigation was still ongoing, but it looked likely that a staff member used a racial slur. At that time, I contacted legal counsel and after talking to legal counsel, I informed Dr. Andrews that we were going to initiate an AC investigation and I came down to Human Resource Department and to Dr. Carlson's office and notified him of the same.
And from your understanding, that is when Dr. Carlson began his policy AC investigation?
Correct.
Did you ever meet with Mr. Oswald?
First time I met him was last week, so no.
Did Dr. Carlson report to you about his investigation?
Yes, he did.
And what did Dr. Carlson report to you about the investigation?
He found he did not, Mr. Oswald did not violate board policy AC, but he did violate board policy.
Did you review any documents related to the investigation?
Yes, his findings and executive summary.
If you can refer to exhibit four? Is that the executive summary that you reviewed?
Yes.
What was your understanding of Dr. Carlson's recommendation?
He recommended discipline via board policy GCDP-AP and training.
And from your understanding of board policy GCPDAP and you can refer to exhibit 11, what type of discipline could be assigned to Mr. Oswald as a result of this incident?
It has multiple options. It can be progressive or if it's a serious misconduct, it can be a recommendation for termination.
And what did you decide?
It was a serious misconduct based on the harm to students present.
If you could turn to exhibit two in your binder? Do you recognize this document?
Yes.
What is this document?
Notice of Charges to Mr. Oswald.
Did you prepare this document?
With the help of legal counsel, yes.
And does this appear to be a true and accurate copy of the notice of charges?
Yes.
I ask for exhibit two to be admitted into evidence.
No objection.
Without objection, exhibit two is admitted.
Dr. Buck, does this document accurately summarize the facts as you understand them?
Yes.
Is it correct that Mr. Oswald is not charged with writing the N-word on the referral as part of this notice of charges?
That was not the findings from Dr. Carlson.
There are, if you look at the first paragraph, there appear to be two bases of dismissal listed. Can you say what those are?
Yes, it's a quotation of board policy GB, CB. Let me see where exactly you want me to start.
We'll hear first.
"Please be advised that I am recommending to the Board of Education your permanent teacher contract should be terminated because of..." You bet. "Because of immoral conduct or willful or persistent violation of or failure to obey the school laws of Missouri or the published regulations of the Board of Education."
We've heard testimony regarding what happened on May 6th with Mr. Oswald and these charges. Why do you believe Mr. Oswald's conduct constituted immoral conduct?
Immoral conduct because it's wrong to say such things in front of students. It's always been wrong. It was wrong when I was a kid in the 70s and 80s. I never had a single teacher ever say a racial slur in the presence of me or any other students that I know of. Even when there's historical text or books that may have had the words written, they would not say it out loud. It was wrong in college. I've never heard a single staff member say it in college. It was wrong when I was a teacher. I never said it nor did anybody else and includes when I did write-ups. It was wrong the entire time I was a principal. I never had one single teacher ever repeat the slur again, even if there is a text utilized that has it in there. No one ever says it out loud. Same for when I was assistant superintendent and I'm not aware of a single person ever saying a racial slur, even if there's a text available that they utilized out loud. And same for the six years of superintendent until May 6th. It hurts kids. It's not okay. And same for the six years of superintendent until May 6th, it hurts kids, it's not okay.
If you look down to Paragraph Four of Exhibit Two, a short one there.
Yes.
It appears to be the second basis for dismissal, willful violation of board policy, is that correct?
Yes.
Are all professional staff members in the district expected to comply with board policy?
Yes, they are.
Was Mr. Oswald expected to comply with board policy?
Yes, he was.
Are board policies accessible to staff members?
Yes, they are online.
Are the policies incorporated into their contracts?
They are, I don't have the exact language in front of me, but it says something to the effect of if this, this contract is executed or signed, uh, the teacher acknowledges that they know board policy and that they're bound and obliged to follow them.
If you could turn to Exhibit Nine, please. Do you recognize this document?
Yes.
What is it?
Board Policy GBCB.
Is that the staff conduct policy?
That is correct.
Which sections of this policy did Mr. Oswald violate?
Dr. Carlson found he violated Number Two and Number Ten.
Can you read Number Two, please?
Maintain courteous and professional relationship with students, parents slash guardians, other district employees, and the public. Transmit constructive criticism to the particular school administrator or supervisor who has the administrative responsibility to address the concern. Employees will not be disciplined for speech that is protected by law and are encouraged to share concerns with their supervisors.
Did Mr. Oswald violate this expectation?
Yes, use of a racial slur with two middle school kids, uh, that are minorities is definitely not courteous nor professional relationship.
And would this, in your opinion, would this violation by itself be enough to warrant termination?
Yes.
And you also mentioned Paragraph Ten, can you please read Paragraph Ten?
Ten, communicate clearly and professionally. Employees will not use profanity and will not raise their voice unless necessary. Written communication should be grammatically correct. Employees will not be disciplined for speech that is protected by law and are encouraged to share concerns with their supervisors.
Did Mr. Oswald violate this expectation?
Yes.
How?
His communication verbally was not professional and he, in my estimation, using a racial slur is part of profanity.
Do you believe that this violation itself is enough to warrant termination?
Yes, it hurts kids, he said it in front of two minority middle school kids.
Can you please turn to Exhibit Ten? Do you recognize this document?
Yes.
What is it?
Board Policy GBH.
Is that the staff-student relations policy?
Yes.
Under the general section of that policy, it says staff members are expected to maintain courteous and professional relationships with students. Did Mr. Oswald violate this expectation?
Yes.
How?
Speech using, again, like I said before, uh, racial slurs is not maintaining courteous or professional relationship with students.
Is this violation by itself sufficient to warrant termination?
Yes.
Do you believe the N-word is a racial slur?
Yes, and I always have, and I believe every teacher I've ever encountered knows it's a racial slur.
As superintendent, could you have placed Mr. Oswald, um, on a notice of deficiencies or provided some type of written reprimand or warning rather than seek his termination?
I could have.
Why not do that?
It's a serious misconduct and a harm to two middle school kids by saying those words in front of them.
As superintendent, could you reassign Mr. Oswald?
I can.
Why not do that?
Again, it's a serious misconduct, thus a recommendation of termination of his permanent contract for the harm it did to two minorities' middle school students.
After hearing the testimony this evening, do you still believe termination of Mr. Oswald's employment is in the best interest of the students of the Lee Summit R7 School District?
Yes.
Why is that?
For the serious misconduct, like I said before, of using a racial slur, saying a racial slur in front of two middle school minority students and the harm it causes those students. It's egregious, he did it willfully, um, it's always been wrong. Like I said earlier, it's been wrong ever since I was a student back in the seventies and eighties.
And why do you believe that it was willful?
He chose to, he did not have to say those words out loud.
I have no further questions.
Thank you, Ms. Basie, Mr. McDorman.
Thank you. Doctor Buck, we met last week, is that correct?
Correct.
And I took your deposition at that time, is that correct?
Correct.
Have you read it?
I have not been provided it, no.
The only document that you reviewed in any respect is Exhibit Four, Pages One and Two, is, am I correct?
That and board policy.
And, and board policy. But as far as the investigation, the Page Three of Mr. Oswald's interview with Dr. Carlson, you didn't read any of that, correct?
Correct.
You didn't talk to parent J. H.?
I did not.
Didn't review what he put, other than that email, you didn't review anything else, am I right?
All I had was his email from May 10th, and again, I had to get that secondhand because he misspelled my email address.
And you knew that Dr. Sharp also conducted an investigation in addition to Dr. Carlson?
As I said, May 11th, when I followed up with Dr. Andrews, I was notified the investigation in the building wasn't complete, but that there was a potential, a strong potential that a staff member used a racial slur in front of students, yes.
So, Pages Seven, Eight, Nine, and Ten, you did not review?
I did not have those, no.
Have you ever looked at them?
I looked at them for the first time last week, uh, at deposition.
Why didn't you review those?
Uh, not the investigator, that's Dr. Carlson's job. I'm supposed to make a recommendation, uh, to, uh, discipline based on what his findings are.
And his recommendation was it was not an AC violation, correct?
He did not find a violation of board policy AC.
AC is a pretty significant board policy, is it not?
I think all board policies are pretty significant board policies.
But this one calls, if there'd been a violation of that, it would have called for immediate termination, wouldn't it?
I think this calls for immediate termination.
I understand that, but AC does that, there's no progressiveness in that as far as warnings.
So they answer your question.
Objection, I think that assumes facts that are not in evidence.
You can answer.
Over, overruled, he can answer.
To answer your question, saying a racial slur, saying the N-word in front of students brings us here regardless of which board policy we're talking about they violate, is a violation of board policy. If it's a violation of board policy AC, we'd be here in a hearing. Again, if it's a board violation of board policy GBCB, it's not okay to use a racial slur in front of minority middle school students.
Just say it out loud.
I said, say the word, yes.
But they can write it down, and that's okay?
I don't think it's okay, it's not a violation of board policies as currently written. I would say it's not okay and I'm not a fan of it.
Were you aware of the fact that Joe Oswald had been on the staff of this district for 27 years?
Yes.
Did you review his personnel file at all?
I did not.
Why not?
I was not the investigator.
As you indicated, you only met him last week.
That is correct.
Simply the fact that he was here for these depositions, right?
Correct.
You've never asked to talk to him, have you?
Actually, did you issue the charges? Dr. Carlson, on my behalf, asked him, or either I heard him or Dr. Del Sim asked if he would come in. They were notified, at least that's what they told me, by their MSTA rep that, uh, the MST rep understood that Joe Oswald was not going to come in and receive said issue, uh, notice of charges. After working with legal counsel, um, we sent a certified mail since he wasn't going to come in and receive it.
Well, obviously, you consider what was done by Joe Oswald on May 6th, a very serious offense.
Yes.
And you feel justified in seeking his termination by the board?
I'm recommending termination, yes.
Now, Dr. Del Sim was involved in this matter as well, is that right?
She did not do the investigation, but she oversees Dr. Carlson.
Now, did she inform you that she was going to meet with Mr. Oswald?
No, but it would be her, either her or Dr. Carlson's responsibility to let him know the findings.
That's actually your responsibility, isn't it?
They're my designees and that's the way we've done things here.
So if they met with him and told him if he'd resign, that none of these charges would go in his file, you didn't know that?
I have no knowledge of that.
Did they have the authority to tell him that?
I don't know what you exactly are asking, are they allowed to tell him his options if he chooses to resign? I think that's a fair and kind thing to do.
There'd be no charges put in his personnel file?
Do you?
Did you authorize that, Dr. Del Sim, to offer that?
No one asked me that.
Did she have that authority without asking you that?
I think it's more than fair and kind to say there will be a hearing and if you choose to not go the hearing route, because you have to notify us that you want to do a hearing, um, that you have the option to resign or retire.
But then, if someone else sought to employ him, they wouldn't know about these charges that you have referred to the board?
I don't know if they'd still know about the charges now, we don't share personnel files to other districts when they get employed by other districts.
There's nothing in the procedures that require the administration to offer resignation in lieu of a hearing, is there?
Not that I know of, but again, it's a fair and kind thing to do.
So as I understand you here today, context means nothing when it comes to uttering a racial slur.
It's never okay to say a racial slur in front of minority students in our school district, it's never okay.
And in this instance, you felt that by him saying the N-word to the student that it would be offensive to her, is that right?
Yes, and every teacher I've ever had work for me, every teacher that I've taken classes from back in the seventies, eighties would say the same thing. It is offensive to say a racial slur to minority students.
But you don't think it's offensive to write it out?
I don't like it, the question is, do I think it's a violation of board policy as it currently written? I do not think it's a violation of board policy after reviewing them, but I do not recommend it, I think it's a bad practice.
Well, when you took this job on a year ago, did you meet with the administration and say, I want to find out what's being done with respect to staff using racial slurs?
When I came, I met with administration and Board of Education, created a board review policy. We decided to pick the policy Js. I deal with students for this year. Next year, they're going to do the Gs and review them to make sure that we are, uh, congruent with what practice we should have. So, and actually, they chose to do students first because we're focused on students, but next year is going to be board policy Gs. Um, also, prior to me coming here, uh, in reaction to, um, social media posts of our struggle, uh, the district administrators were already looking at, um, whole class instruction text, in particular, To Kill a Mockingbird. Uh, by the time I got here, the recommendation was no longer to use that. Um, I thought that was a wise thing after, and I supported that. Um, obviously, there's no way we could know all content out there. I wouldn't know every single book that's ever been printed, which ones have it or not to be used as a whole class instruction. So we, and I directed the curriculum instruction department upstairs to create a process so that way if somebody came across something they felt was inappropriate, they could refer it uh, and that referral then would be reviewed, um, for appropriateness. And there is actually a link on our website for doing just such.
Are you aware of the high school this spring playing the movie The Butler for students?
Until yesterday, when you put it into, uh, um, whatever you call this binder, no.
You found out that that did occur, haven't you?
Yes, and I assume by the inclusion, uh, in here that it has a word, um, a racial slur of some type or profanity of some type. I'm not aware of the movie, I've never seen the movie.
Well, is that something that they shouldn't show, assuming?
Again, I don't think it's a violation of board policy, but I do not like it. And I supported To Kill a Mockingbird being removed from whole class instruction. And I would support removal of all other things that use a racial slur in them, text or otherwise, um, from whole class instruction. Hence, I created a pathway for us to find out about those things.
Well, I understand your passion for this. What I don't understand is why there's not even a memo at some point when you become the superintendent of the school system, making it very clear to administration, to staff, even to the community, that there will be absolutely zero tolerance for any staff member.
Objection, this is testimony, if, if the question is argumentative.
Sustain, please, please, um, ask questions rather than what you were doing there, thank you.
You never sent a memo out to the staff, did you?
I never sent a memo out that staff shouldn't punch a kid, but obviously, they shouldn't, it'd be a violation of board policy. It has been known and always has been known for my entire 43 years of being either a student or working in schools that you do not say a racial slur. And the first time I've ever had it was right now in 43 years, and that was on May 6th. I've never known of another staff member nor witnessed another staff member, even when you're talking about referrals and making sure you're accurate, ever saying a racial slur in front of students. It's always been wrong at harmsteads, kids, it should not be allowed.
Well, you, you say there's about punching a kid, but look at Exhibit SS. Do you have that in front of you?
I do.
Go to Page 27. You have a discipline guide on fighting, don't you?
I have a, this is here as a student discipline, this is not a faculty discipline, this is not a faculty board policy. This refers back to board policy Js. The finding here by Dr. Carlson is a violation of board policy Gs, GBCB and GBH.
Dr. Buck, you gave the example about hitting a student.
If a staff member hit a student, it would not be covered by what you see here, it would be covered by the G series of board policy. This is covered by the J series of board policy, which refers to students.
Policy about striking a student, that's what you're saying.
If a staff member hit a student, we would be here for a hearing as well. And I didn't send a memo out saying, do not hit a student. I did not send a memo out, staff members, you don't steal a car in a parking lot. But if a staff member stole a car in a parking lot, we would be here in a hearing for termination of contract.
So you have used the term, let me go to it, calling your attention Exhibit Two. You, you say terminated be-
I'm not there yet.
Alright, I'm sorry.
Sorry. I'm there.
Alright, first paragraph, you rattled off pretty quickly earlier, the basis, immoral conduct. Is immoral conduct defined anywhere in board policy?
Immoral conduct is conduct that is not a professional relationship. So no, there is not a single- So no, there is not a single definition of immoral conduct that I know of in board policy. Just like professional relationship, there's not a single definition. We know that saying a racial slur in front of students out loud is harmful to students and is not a professional relationship.
Bradley, will you direct the witness to answer the questions?
Yes, if you could confine your answer to the specific question, ask a specific question, please give a specific answer to the question. Thank you.
Is there a definition of willful?
No.
Is there a definition of persistent?
No.
Why not?
I didn't create the board policy, but there is no way you could have a board policy as thick as it is to be exhaustive of all things.
It'd be what?
Exhaustive of all things. There's not a definition of school laws. There's not a definition of Board of Education, I don't believe. There's a lot of things in that paragraph. There's not a definition in board policy.
Have you checked with anyone in the district about Mr. Oswald and his employment in the school district?
Could you be more clear about that? When, how?
Once you became aware of this grievous act on his part, did you attempt to determine there was any other incidents of where he'd done something like this?
Yes, I asked Dr. Carlson if he reviewed his file.
And what was his response?
He had nothing in his permanent file of district office regarding a discipline.
Has anyone come forward and told you anything about Mr. Oswald that would be negative as to his performance as a teacher in this district?
Yes, this May 6th incident.
Well, I'm talking about-
I'd ask the audience, please, you got to stop reacting.
Outside of that May 6th incident?
No.
Did you discuss with Dr. Carlson in any respect his recommendations?
He gave me his recommendations.
And he recommended further training?
He recommended discipline was warranted and training.
Would you agree with me, there's no point in training if you're terminating?
I would agree with that.
So is it fair to say that Dr. Carlson's recommendation was not termination?
No, he recommended a board policy that include termination as a possibility.
But that was after progressive work, wasn't it?
It's both, it's in the board policy. Both are in the board policy. If it's a serious misconduct, you don't do progressive, and I found this to be a serious misconduct.
Was your mind made up on May 10th?
No.
No further questions?
Ms. Basie?
Just a couple of questions. Dr. Buck, do you believe current board policy already prohibits the use of racial slurs?
Yes.
Going to refer you again to Exhibit SS, which is the student handbook. Page 29.
I'm there.
Under that section, harassment, the second paragraph, "Students are not to engage in sexual jokes or gestures, verbal or written, sexual or racial slurs." And then it goes on. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So students are specifically instructed not to engage in racial slurs. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Much like students are specifically instructed not to hit others, not to fight?
Yes.
I have no additional questions.
Mr. McDorman, do you have anything further?
Yes. With respect then to students using racial slurs, should the punishment be more than one day ISS?
We need to follow our board policy and handbook here.
What do you recommend a change to that?
I don't at this time, no. There's a big difference between a 12-year-old kid making a mistake and adult who is trusted to look out for the safety of students saying a racial slur twice in front of them and the harm it does to those students.
Did you understand that the student asked him to read it again?
My understanding was the student did ask him to repeat it the second time, yes.
But context doesn't matter?
I would have never said that, so no, context does not matter. Do not say racial slurs in front of students, period.
Nothing further?
Thank you, sir. Board members, does anybody have any questions for, oh, I'm sorry, I should have-
No, I don't have any. I was going to say I have nothing further, so my mouth was open. I'm sorry.
My apologies. Board members, does anybody have any questions for Dr. Buck? Counsel, last chance. Anybody have questions? Good. Joe?
Since Dr. Buck is a representative of administration, he's allowed to remain in the room. That's why he's been here throughout, just as Mr. Oswald has a right to be in the room throughout the hearing, even though he may testify. So, Dr. Buck, I think you're excused for now and you may go back to the table.
Thank you, Dr. Buck. Ms. Basie, do you have any further witnesses?
I do not have any further witnesses.
Okay, Mr. McDorman, if it's okay with you, we'll take our break before we start your witnesses, okay? Uh huh. So, board members, please be back and we will resume at 9:30. 9:30, so we have a 10-minute recess. 9:30, please.